Okay, if we're ready, we'll get started here. Welcome to the special meeting on Tuesday.
Recording in progress.
Welcome to the Tuesday, September 30th, 2025 special meeting of the Rio City Council. Let's do a roll call, please, Anita.
Councilmember McAdams.
Here.
Councilmember McCarthy. Councilmember Vialla.
Here.
Mayor Pretend Fisher.
Here.
Mayor Doggato.
Here. All right, let's have a moment of silence and then Councilmember McCarthy, if you can lead us in the pledge, would that be all right? We're going to have our city manager give us a statement and then we're going to launch into our content, subject of the subject content of our meeting tonight. Thank you, Lane.
Thank you, Mayor. As city manager of the city, one of my responsibilities is to oversee all operations of the city. However, tonight I will not be participating in this study session discussion and I'll be leaving the room. I'm currently a tenant of Abrams Park and even though I'm not a decision maker out of the preponderance of caution, as to not have any influence on this discussion tonight regarding rent policy, I'll be leaving the room and not participating at all in the discussion.
All right. Thank you, Lane, and I hope you have a nice evening, you and your family. I'd like to invite our finance director, Tori Hannah, to come up to join us because she's been working hard on various financial projects in our city, including our subject tonight. And she is our acting city manager at times when Lane is out of town. Welcome, Tori.
Thank you.
You want to tell us a little bit about your life, where you were born, grew up? Maybe later, we'll see if we have time at the end of the meeting. All right, so we're going to launch into our only agenda matter, which is a rental market studied and data and other information on Preston Park, including the loan refinancing alternatives, and this includes Abrams Park as well. We'll be hearing some data on that. Who in staff would like to open this up? Tori, thank you.
Okay, good evening. I'm Tori Hannah, the finance director, and we'll be waiting just to pull up the presentation in a moment. But in general, this is a check-in policy on on the city's current rent policy, current financial matters that may impact Preston and Abrams properties. This presentation is informational and more in a study session format. There are multiple ways of looking at fiscal sustainability within the properties. And should council consider any updates, then we'll be looking for that direction. If council wants us to run any additional scenarios, we would be given direction to do that. And just a couple of points, someone noted an address correction on the Abrams previously office on the staff on the staff report and that should just be that should just be removed. It says that the Abrams office is at 2960 Carpenter Court. And in relation to the number of below-market rent requirements, we were looking at a document that was in draft form and did not have an adjustment for rounding. So while the staff report mentions that there are 111 units after we conferred with a specialized attorney, the actual number is 109. And so with that, I'll go on to the next slide. So what we'll be starting out is looking at some of the property profiles, an overview of the council's existing policy, some information that we received from an asset management reserve study, and also some of the financing alternatives for Preston Park loan. And just note that these are very preliminary in nature. This is what our municipal advisor has provided, and we'll be getting more clarity and coming back at a later council meeting with that data. So in looking at Abrams, the information that you see for both properties in this slide and the similar profile attachments are based on the July 31st rent roll. The number of below-market units is 68. The number of market units at Abrams is 126 for a total of 194 properties. Revenues are approximately $4 million. The Abrams Park property contributes approximately $670,000 to the general fund operating fund each year. There is also, if looking at the budget, you might see 1.8 million, but 1.1 million of that goes for debt service payments, related insurance, and an actual reserve requirement by our lender, which averages out to be about $111,000 per year. One thing to note, the tenancy at Abrams is strong with 78% of the tenants there for five years or more. And in looking at the models, there are two and four-bedroom models. They range from 1,000 to 1,800 square feet. The occupancy rate is 98.9%. And the rent, we'll look at a distribution, but the average for in-place rent, and when I say refer to in-place rent, I've we've segregated out the below-market units and we're looking at those units that would be subject to the regular CPI increases and not not subject to some of the mandates that are required for the below-market units. New tenant rate is between $2,350 to $2,500. And for four-bedroom units, the average in-place rent is 2,394, with the new rent tenants coming in paying approximately $3,200 to $3,450. What we provided in this slide was there were some requests for rent roll information. What we did is place these in different bins, so to speak, of dollar amounts. And looking at this chart, while the average rent is 1729, you can see that there are some rents that are between 1426 and 1640. The number of a number of above represents the number of tenants that are within that rent range. So if you're looking at the Abrams two bedrooms, there are 27 units between the 1426 and 1640 range. And you can see kind of in comparison that you're probably seeing lower rents in some some of these examples because these tenants have been here a longer period of time, whereas you're seeing the new tenants come on in the higher rent areas, they're they're taking on the market rates as they come in. The same for the four-bedroom units. There are some as low as between the 1971 and 2,220 monthly range. There are 22 of those. And then there are two at the top end of the range at 3,221,3226. Preston Park has two and three-bedroom models ranging from 1,000 to 1,572 square feet. They have an occupancy rate of about 99.4%. Within the Preston Park 354 units, two units are set aside, one for the office and one for the community center. They have 48 below-market rate units. They generate $8.6 million of annual revenue. And one caveat is to that is that about 418,000 of that revenue represents interest earnings in that year. So while interest rates have been high, they've also been high on the $13 million that has been sitting and accruing to help pay down the loan dollars. So it's more closer, I would say, to probably about $8.1 million in annual rent. The city receives a distribution of $2 million to the general fund for operating revenues. And what you'll see on the on this property is there's probably close to 43% that has been there 10 years or more. And if you're looking at the higher five to 10-year range, 23%. This property again enjoys a occupancy rate of 99.4%. And the average in-place rent is 1861 for two-bedroom units and for three-bedroom unit units, 2399. You'll see the distribution on this one as well. You've got a 75 tenants with rents between 13 and 11 and 1550 in the two-bedroom units and seven tenants between the 2511 and 2675, showing how the marketplace formula captures new tenants coming in at the higher rate. The same when looking at the three-bedroom units, you'll see 20 at 1811 or 2,040, and then the higher-end units, three of them at 2961 to $3,000. So previously, council adopted Resolution 201087 and as well as Resolution 201002. These establish the long-term formulas for calculating and establishing market rents at both properties. The market rent formula is to adjust new tenants to market levels. So when new tenants are coming in, the property managers will look at what is the market rate and those tenants would be subject to the new market rate formula. And then how are the in-place rents handled? Those tenants that have maybe been here five years plus or two or three years here plus, when they renew their agreement, they would go up at the lesser of 3% or the Department of Labor's CPI for San Francisco. Just one legislative note, that in California, there is a Tenant Protection Act, AB 1482. And this legislation restricts annual rent increases to 5% plus of CPI or 10%, which is lower. The current maximal allowable increase beginning August 1st, 2025 through July 31st, 2026, within Monterey County is 7.7%. So one of the check-in points was to see for new tenants, are we getting appropriate market rates? And in looking at our existing formula, Gray Star has been, which is the one Gray Star has been referencing, the Abrams and Preston new tenant rates column, that reflects the current city policy and looking at the rate range for new tenants to move in. We also did a third-party study just as a check-in point to see if those still are relevant for determining market level. And that consultant said between 2,42750 for two bedrooms, 3,000 to 3,400 for three, and 2,950 to 3,950 for the four bedrooms. One note is that it's challenging finding comparable three and four-bedroom units for market studies because a lot of them on the market are single-family homes. And adjustments can be made because, one, you may not have a two-car driveway, you may not have as big of a yard. So you'll see that some of that has been adjusted down from an overall market, but still nevertheless, it looks like our current calculation is within reason for establishing new market rates. We also received from Gray Star some information from Hello Data, which is a which is a third-party data mining company that provides information on market rents. And we just wanted to look at that as well to say, are we within range? So the council policy resolution established increased rents at the lesser of 3% or the CPI. What this chart does is it holds the 2015, 2016 rent baseline constant and just says, what would the difference be really if all things remained equal at the end of this 10-year period between charging a 3% cap at the lesser of the 3% or annual CPI or at the CPI? So the average annual CPI for that period was 3.4%. And that amounts to about annual rents for both properties at 10.8 million. Whereas doing the lesser of, it comes out to 10.6 million. So not doing it at a standard 3% cap yielded about a $200,000 difference between both properties. And if you were to follow just the CPI, it would have moved up to 11.11.2 million. And one thing to note that was mentioned in the original study is CPI sometimes is not a good indicator of what market rate, what market rents is because they're almost two different indexes. CPI can be more reflective of consumer pricing, but it may not necessarily coincide with the market. And that's where you might sometimes hear people say, my rent is rising faster than if their employment isn't tied to a CPI. The rental rates could be going up depending on what different entities outside of Abrams and Preston are charging. So average increased estimates, should council consider looking at any increases? What we wanted to do is just look at the estimated increased impact to the tenant. And we looked at an average rent of about $2,055 and that's almost the average of both properties. So if you were to say, we're going to just say the CPI is 3%, that would be a monthly increase of $67 and maybe you say, well, maybe you want to catch up of an additional 1% of $22. That would increase the rent to $90 a month. And it would be close to $1,100 annually increase. The same, looking at a 3% incremental increase and a 3% CPI, that would be $67 for each increment or $135 more a month or 1620 annually. And what in Abrams and Preston, they're both different. You've noticed that you may notice that Preston is a much larger property. So if there's a 1% increase in Abrams, that would yield an additional $31,000 in revenue. While the CPI of 3% is 93,000, we would bring in a total of $124,000. If you were saying that on Preston, a 1% would yield $75,000 in additional revenues, while the CPI would produce 225,000, this would be a total of $300,000. And noting that if this is CPI and it's not the lesser of, that would be a number that would already be recognized within the existing policy if it were if if the if the CPI was constant. So one of the things we looked at as well as with a study, we retained a third-party consultant association associations reserves. They reviewed the property, took photos of items. They met with Gray Star. We also met with Gray Star to review the list of of property improvements and and schedules. We also had a separate meeting with a consultant because we had some questions. And this is based on that information. And so what we're showing is that, and this is an average, the average contribution needed on Abrams is 1.3 million to fund improvements. What I've done is I've listed some years when it's higher than the 1.3 million. You can see there's some years when it's 1.6, 2.5. The idea would be is to be saving up until to accumulate reserves to assist in paying for the large for the large, the large roof replacement in year 21. And this is, and this is a, this is the, the roof replacement is the largest driver within that year. Now, is it not to say that if we can just do a flat rate or if we know rents are going to increase over time, could we do a ramp up of that? And yes, rents can be ramped up to get to that, to get to that number over time. But also noting on Abrams, that the bonds mature in November of 2036. Now, right now, we looked at that 1.1 million dollars that's being contributed to the bond. But just noting that some of that is an insurance. And so we'd have to assume that insurance in itself is still going to be an ongoing cost. But about $930,000 would be an ongoing, would be released of ongoing expenses in these outer years. In Preston, the reserve study indicated 1.8 million, with again, the highest cost item being roof replacement in year 19. One of the things to be aware of in Preston is we are refinancing the existing loan or looking to refinance it. The city has set aside $13 million to help pay down the loan. It has a balloon payment coming up. The loan is $36 million and we've been paying about 1.5 million dollars in interest annually on that loan. These are preliminary information from our consultant, but it looks at three assumptions. One, if we applied the $13 million to the Preston Park loan, then it would be a $23 million loan. The 10, 20 and 30 year financing terms are all amortized over a 30 year period, meaning that the annual payment is based on 30 years. But they do have balloon payments at the 10 and 20 year interval. So while you would be paying 1.4 million or 1.6 in annual debt service, you would be paying 18.6 million at the end of the 10 year term or 12.8 million at the end. On the 30 year, there would be no, there would be just pretty much the regular annual payment. The second scenario follows the same guidelines. However, it assumes of that 13 million, 6.5 million is given to the city for city facilities. At the last facilities funding, there was mentioned that maybe some of this money could be used to leverage city facilities. And so this assumes that half of that amount is gone to pay for the loan and half for city facilities, resulting in annual debt service on a 30 year loan of 2.1 million. The other scenario assumes, what if council chose to say, let's take the full 13 million and apply it to city facilities? What would the loan payment look like then? It could be between 2.2 million to 2.6 million, depending on which path the city chose to go. So one of the things, there are multiple ways to look at the funding scenarios and the impact on the funds. A lot of these costs are, are long term. One of the immediate needs that we, we look at in the example with Preston Park is that it's been using some of the, the funds that are held by our third party administrator and reserves to help fund capital improvements. The reserve balance prior to the full cost of this year was about $737,000. So they will be drawing down some of those reserves to pay for improvements. In the restated budget scenario, we looked at, we, if we look at 20% affordable units in Abrams and Preston, one thing to note is that Abrams has a, has a disproportional amount of, of 20% BMR units. So what if we took that value and said, let's give a credit to Abrams on that distribution? Because that would help, that would help it balance more with ongoing, with capital cost. So instead of the city getting the 1.8 million or the city's general fund getting $674,000, it would be 260,000, $264,000 less. And then we put in the full capital renovation costs, just to see what that impact would be. If you look out to the restated projected 28, 29, which did include a 2% incremental increase, we just did what is a mid range. You could see that in fiscal year 28, 29, that it is able to contribute that maximum amount. And then you would start picking up for the years where there was a deficit. In essence, you're, you're doing some form of ramping up because you cannot cover it at that full amount. There are other scenarios where you could gradually ramp up over a five year period and be okay. But it would just be, how, how do you want to proceed is, is one of the options that we can look at. Preston Park, we made the same assumption for a 3% CPI and a 2% incremental increase to show what that impact would be on rents. And one of the things is that Preston looks like it can sustain the cost of the increase. However, it depends what would council choose from a debt service standpoint option? Because if we're looking at the fiscal year 25, 26 restated scenario, we're seeing that in the next couple of years, it has sufficient funding to recapture that capital improvement budget and move forward. However, should council choose to take the, the 13 million and use it on city facilities, that increases the amount of debt service on a 30 year to, to 2.6 million. And noting that there is an option where there's even a lower debt service. So looking at council direction for what might be the best debt service, debt service selection? And then is council happy with the existing rent policy and wants to retain it? This sample also includes taking the $264,000, which represents the net difference of those properties in Abrams and applying it more towards Preston. It would be what Preston would be paying if it were carrying those additional below market rate units. And with that, I conclude my presentation.
I have a question on the loan information on this 10, 20, 30 year comparison for Preston Park as an example. It says 23 million assumes 13 million to loan. And it has a 10 year, a 20 year and a 30 year column. And so I want to understand it, if you did 10 years at 1.4 million for annual debt service, that would be 14 million over 10 years, correct?
Yes, but part of that is principal and interest, but yes, that would be a portion of it. There would be 18.6 million left to refinance at the end of that term.
Right, so I add up 14 million and 18.6 million and I get 32.6 million. And so I look at that 10 year cost of that scenario to the city as a 32.6 million dollar price tag. Is that, is that correct math?
Uh, yes, if, if you are looking at it, that includes principal and interest. And then you're saying at the very end, it would be 18.6.
Okay, so if I add up 1.4 million for 10 years to the 18.6 balance, I get 32.6.
Yes, the one portion would be is if you choose to refinance at the, at the end in that one, there could be other costs associated with interest on the 18.6 million if you get another loan.
Okay, and then the 20 year loan, if I paid 1.6 million for 20 years and then I paid 12.8 million balance, I get a 44.8 million dollar total. So that tells me that 20 years is a lot more expensive than the 10 year.
Well, that could be part of the interest on the 10 years additional of interest that you might pay.
I get it, but I'm just saying if we compare 10 year scenario to 20 year scenario, in the 10 year scenario, we could be paying 32.6 million. In the 20 year scenario, we'd be paying 48, sorry, 44.8 million.
And I would say, yes, but that represents 10, 10 more years of interest.
Right, so it's like if you, if you balance, if you pay your home off in 15 years, you, you pay a less total than if you pay your home off in 30 years.
Yes, but.
That's what this is kind of like that.
In, but in the sense that there is a balloon payment at the end, yes. If, if we were to save up separately, the 18.6 million at the end of the 10 year term, then, then you wouldn't have the additional interest charges. But if you were to refinance, you're going to have additional interest charges, which could make it, which could make it a lesser cost if interest rates are lower. Because right now, the interest rates on, let me see if I have that, the interest rates on the 10 year is 4.51% and the interest rates on the 20 year is 5.66.
Okay, so I'm trying to, as much as possible, compare an apple to an apple. And if the 10 year apple costs me, costs the city 32.6 and the 20 year apple costs 44.8 and the 30 year apple costs 49.4, then the total cost of the 20 year apple and the 30 year apple is almost the same. So I would never choose the 20 year because I'd have to pay it off 10 years sooner and I don't make, I don't spend a lot more money on the extra 30 year compared to the 20 year.
Oh, right, but you would have the 12.8 million left to refinance on the 20 year. It wouldn't pay it down to nothing, you would have to refinance it. The only one that pays it down to zero is the 30 year. So you're not doing a regular 20 year amortization where you pay 20 years and you're done. You paid 20 years and then you have a balloon payment at the end of 12.8 million.
I get that, so I'm, to, to make it apple to apple, I'm assuming that with the 10 year, we're going to pay 18.6 at the end.
If you are paying cash, it would be 18.6. If you refinance, there could be different additional charges.
Different things you could do with each of the three options, but to keep them consistent, I'm just adding up those two numbers, the annual debt service and the amount due at term in each of the three columns. And I'm getting the numbers of 32, 44 and 40, 40, 32, 44. And I think that's 44.4. So anyway, I'm getting three numbers and I'm looking at it, saying, Josh, if we did the first one, we'd spend 32 million of the city taxpayers' money. If we did the third one, we would spend, I'm not sure what that is, 30 times 1.6, that's 48. And then the 1.4, so that'd be 30, 49. So we spent about 49 million. So do I want to spend 32 million of the city's taxpayers' money or 44 million or 49 million? If I was to choose between those three options, that's what I'd be looking at, that's one thing.
If you were to be able to pay it in 10 years, the 18.6 million, if you were to refinance it, you're going to have interest on additional 20 years.
Right, right, I understand that, okay. Thank you, let's go to Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor, so two clarifying questions for me. First of all, fantastic presentation, thank you very much. Really kind of helped my understanding in addition to the staff report. So you've listed kind of some scenarios at 10, 20 and 30 year, but the reality is, there's probably unlimited scenarios, right? Of, of both in time and amount of principal that you put forward, you just listed three.
I, I listed three and those are the initial three that's been provided by the consultant. We looked at a mid range and, and one where you paid half of it and the other piece. We're going to come back with more numbers. When we get closer to finalizing things, right now, they're talking to different lenders. This is what they're seeing in the market and they're looking at both a private placement and a public offering. And this is what they think is likely to come up.
So just big picture, because I know with an individual home, you could do like a five, a 15, a 25, even a 40 or 45 year loan. Is it kind of similar for this or are we more limited?
Uh, you could do a fully amortized 20 year loan. You know, they can go out for market to, to what we would request them to do or, or look at some of the alternate scenarios, but those are the, the three that they are thinking most likely.
Okay, second question, similar, just in terms of options, you listed the 1, 2 and 3% increase above CPI. But the reality is there's a 4 and a 5, right, scenario too, that you, you don't have in there.
Right, you could go up to 4 because, well, assuming CPI is 3, you can't go above 7.7%.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Because that's the state, yes.
And before we go to Councilmember Adams, I apologize for jumping into a question. I forgot our process was to go public first, I apologize for that mistake. Councilmember McAdams, and then we'll go to the public.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for breaking out the deed restricted affordable units. And so I think for me, when you say below market, even though a majority of the units are below market, you're speaking specifically to the deed restricted affordable unit.
Yes, the required affordable housing unit.
So that's a big, I, I wanted to just make that clear.
Yes, yes, and all the numbers where we look at average have excluded those.
Yes, okay, great. And then so are Abrams and Preston, the communities officially designated as affordable housing communities? Or is it sort of like it's perceived that way because the rents have not kept up with the market?
I, I might see if our city attorney might be able to, to con.
It's just perceived, it's usually, it's done because of council policy that was set in 2010, for which these rents are, I guess you would call them below market, but they're not subject to a regulatory agreement, which would be typical for affordable housing.
Okay, thank you.
The, the rent.
And then, so when I was reading the, the 2010 policy, this phrase, long term, is used several times. And so that wording to me is very ambiguous. So 15 years ago, was that long term, you know, was that council thinking long term is five years or 500 years? So for this council, I would encourage whatever policy changes that we make, we're specific with the time, three years, five years, 10 years, just because, you know, this, this phrase, long term is just too ambiguous. And, and so I think by having this time, you know, in the policy, it, it will be a, a good communication tool for future councils and the community. So that's something that I'm encouraging this council to do. So 15 years ago, do we know what the council's interpretation in 2010 of long term was?
I don't think we do.
Okay.
I don't think we, we know. There was a lot of discussion that the initial tenants were told that maybe someday they'd be able to purchase these units. And some of those tenants were around in 2010. And they were saying, first of all, it never came true that we could ever buy these. And we want rent to be as low as possible. And every year, this council would determine how much to raise the rent. And it was very unpleasant to have people filling up the council chambers every year saying, don't raise our rent. Don't raise our rent. Council said, let's avoid this craziness of every year going through this. Let's set a policy so we don't have to do this every year. And let's be kind and, and good landlords, understanding people are struggling. Let's do a 3% or CPI, whichever is lesser. And that will be the maximum, we will increase our rent. So effectively was a rent control, we didn't really call it that, we just said, our policy is the cap. So that is the, a, a slice of the history that, that happened.
Perfect, thank you, Mayor, and I too am a renter and of course, I want my rent to be as low as possible. And my three years here of being a renter in Marina and also being a renter in Pacific Grove, I am used to a 10% increase pretty much every, every year. So I think that especially in the peninsula, if you have pets, having to fight for units. I mean, oh my gosh, it's so challenging. You know, you have 20 people in line, all of them good applicants, you know, all of them with a fistful of cash for a down payment. Even some people offering over, you know, I, I do think that from 15 years ago, obviously the rental market has changed dramatically. And so I think that that's something that, that we. that we need to keep in mind. Um.
Yeah, I didn't do a great job talking about long-term. But those tenants that were there initially in the nineties were considered the long-term, whether we use that, I don't know if we used that term then in 2010. But some of the tenants are still there. And so it, it's accurate to say that they're long-term tenants. Not that we need to need that, not that we need to use that, that phrase. But I think the long-term tenants are considered to be those original tenants or, 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 or near original tenants that have just been there for a long time.
Sure. And so again, you know, just going back to that phrase in the policy of long-term, I hope that we can be more definitive with whatever policy improvements or changes that we implement. We're specific with that time, three years at this rate, five years at that something. So we're not trying, a future council is not trying to sort of figure out or, or look to your historical, um, knowledge. Can I keep going or am I out of time?
This is a study session, so we have more flexibility.
Okay.
And since I, I blew it at the start, let's just go through. And then we'll go to public comment and then we'll come back to the council.
Okay.
If you, if you have more that you'd like to say that.
Um, I, I do. I think a huge takeaway from me with researching the packet and the issue is this inequity and lack of opportunity for all of the residents in Marina to receive renter support and subsidy from the city. Um, and so rather than subsidizing only these handful of residents who lucked out and have been able to be in these units for 15 years or however long, I would really like to see, um, a robust renters assistance program that's available to all income qualified households, not just if you live in Abrams and Preston. And so that's, that was a big takeaway. You know, especially since the turnover in Preston and Abrams is, is nothing. And I would be staying there too, of course, you know, if I was paying $1,900 for a four-bedroom house. Absolutely. So the attrition is not there. And so it's really um, a barrier of opportunity for other residents to be having that benefit. And so I would like to see, um, part of this discussion be and perhaps part of that 13.5 million, you know, maybe we put 500,000 towards a renters assistance program. And if you're income qualified and you live in Abrams and Preston, you can still apply. It would just be a more broad approach to supporting renters in our city. Um, and so I'll just leave it at that and thank you so much.
Thank you. Let's go to Councilmember Biala.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so much again. It's hard to know where to start first. Just a simple question. So, um, there was the uh, initial chart on a 36th degree north, uh, study and the hello data. So the hello data came from Gray Star. Did we initiate, did we choose the 36 North Properties survey?
Yes, yes, we did. We were trying to find a, a local, uh, property manager, realtor, realtor that could assist us in just having an external look at the, the rates.
Okay. So that is our doing. It's not attached to Gray Star.
It's not attached to Gray Star.
I think that's really important for, um, people, uh, in Preston and Abrams to know that it's not associated as hello data. The hello, whatever it was called. Okay. Um, so, oh gosh. You know, uh, I appreciate all the financials and, 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 and you're presenting data, but it's pretty dense and there's a lot of things that, in accounting that you know that we couldn't possibly understand. I mean, I, I, I appreciate the mayor's sort of global assessment. But I know that for every decision we make, you would probably have something that would say, but we could also do this or this. But I don't have the, the whole in-depth understanding and, and scope of our finances in general, short-term, long-term and, and, you know, so I would hope that we would be able to get from you, your recommendations of all these things that you have presented, what based on your knowledge of our, our needs as a city, our capabilities in the future of payment and all the other financial arrangements that you kind of give us an idea about what you as our, as our finance person recommend. Because, uh, I would be afraid to say, well, I think it looks good and why don't we try this? I, I can't, I don't have confidence in myself on, on being able to understand that. So I would like maybe in the next study session that you come up and you explain why you would choose this over this. And, and anything else to help us use your expertise.
Okay.
Okay. Because I, I, I wouldn't be able to, to, you know, to, to, um, make that decision based on all this information that you presented, but it's, it was really great, but, um, I, I wouldn't have that. Okay. So, um, so I, I'm trying to, um, understand, um, where we're at. It's not just a matter of, you know, raising rents or not. I mean, I think, you know, judging by the information. Um, and we have the ability to make those decisions. But I think there's some fundamental things too that, um, were brought up in one of the handouts, um, from, uh, the tenant association. And I just want to, to kind of say that there's a fundamental perspective. Because all, if you ask anyone who's living with their, do, do, how do you feel about us raising rents? And I am almost 100% sure everybody would say absolutely not. So that's not sort of the, the starting place for us. But we all know that there's been tremendous and, um, and really, uh, astounding, um, spikes in rents all over the place. And, and Marina used to have more affordable units and now we've been subject to market rate, rentals that are just skyrocketing, including the peninsula, but now also us. So, you know, there's this basic philosophical, um, issue for me is yes, it's all out of control. So why would we want to say we're, we're trying to attempt to get to market rate? So there's, in my mind, that's a struggle. But at the same time, it's not in isolation. We can't say that we're just trying to match, um, uh, market rate. Because along with that has been spikes in, uh, building costs, construction, you know, everything else about how we live, what the city is trying to do. Construction costs have skyrocketed also. And so we are trying to do those things too. So you can't just look at, uh, the increases in rents and saying that's unfair. No, the city also has needs that we're trying to keep up with the, with the skyrocketing costs of so many things that we want to do too. So I just wanted to say that, that piece because, uh, otherwise it looks like we're, we're, we're making a decision just based on it's not fair to, to try to chase the out of control market rate, um, rents in our area. So, um, um, I, I also wanted to ask, um, because they, the, the charts here about the long-term residents, it, it was a pretty eye-opening to me. I never really saw these little pie graphs here. Um, where there's such a large percentage of folks uh, who have been there 10 years or more and probably even more than 10 years for both of, um, Abrams and Preston. And it makes me feel like, again, thinking about what the original intent of the affordable units when we original, and maybe only our mayor could speak to that. Obviously you, you want affordable housing for everyone. So, but beyond that, what was our expectation? Was this seen as sort of, if we had looked at the possibilities back then, was it okay in our minds to allow somebody to stay there 20, 25 years? And as, uh, Councilmember, um, uh, McAdams has just said, that, 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 that then limits the number of people who can access that kind of benefit. Because if they're there 30 years, that means 30 years we have not allowed another, uh, family to access that kind of benefit and maybe be able to live there for five years until they got themselves, you know, more financially stable and then did something else. So I just don't know, like, what were we thinking back then? Because right now it's, it, you know, we, we, we had no way to change it, but that, this is what's happened. Is that it has become a very restrictive group of, of, um, uh, benefits for, um, a small amount of people rather than it being, you know, sort of spread over. And the graphs were really telling to me too. So in Abrams, you know, we have, if you looked at it as like a bell curve, we have this kind of shape in, in Abrams where there are really a lot of folks that are enjoying the lower rents and very little going, you know, going down to the higher, right? And then when you look at the Preston Park graphs, it almost looks like a bell-shaped curve, except at the tail end on the lower, there's, you know, there's kind of a, a bigger portion of people. And my question is then, is, is this the scenario that we would really like to see more of? You know, just philosophically or in, in reality, are, are, are we okay with most of the people being on the lower? Or is the goal for these, these rentals sort of saying that we would want to see a bell-shaped curve? Where the, the, the folks that are getting access to the benefit are more in the middle and not so much heavily weighted to the higher ones or the lower. In this case, it's the lower rents. I don't know who can answer those questions.
Tori, you want to jump in?
I, I would just say, um, that would, you know, be a council determination as to what they, where you would like to see the, the property go. I mean, that, that would be part of the discussion. You're, if you're moving some people more towards the middle, that could be an incremental increase on potentially units that were maybe 70% trying to get you more towards the middle of the, of the, of the curve versus you may never obtain market value. But maybe there's a path to bring people more to the middle. That would be, you know, one of the council discussion items.
Thank you, Tori.
Thank you. I, I have some other things, but just to, for us to think about these, um, differences. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Let's go to Mayor Perotam Vischer and then we'll go to the public.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to start by saying this is not easy. And I am happy that we're all here tonight and the public and a lot of people on Zoom as well. We could have been home enjoying a day or a night off, but we feel like this is something that we need to discuss. It needs to be addressed. So I want to thank staff as well. I agree with, um, Councilmember McAdams that I would like to see a rental assistance program in our city, not just for Abrams and Preston, but for the entire city, for those who need it. We have a huge, um, homeless problem. And I always think the best we can do is try not to add people to that group. If we have people with housing, what can we do to make sure that they don't lose their housing? And then it's even harder to help them. Like, uh, Councilmember Biala said, we also have, um, people saying, hey, we need so much money for the needs our city has. And what can we do to find the money? You know, why would other people who don't need it? And I don't, people don't like me saying that, that they get a discount every month on their rents. So why are you asking us to, to pay for an extra tax while other people are getting a gift from the city? So we need to look at older people, all the residents. Listen to them. Um, the questions from our mayor about, you know, comparing apples to apples and hurts so hard. I'm glad I was, um, I got the advice when we bought our first home, my dad, just do a 30-year linear. Nothing crazy like no interest or interest only. You pay off your loan. And, but to compare, um, the apples to apples, nobody knows what the interest rate will be in 10 years or in 20 years. Nobody knows. Nobody. And, uh, so that's always a gamble. So the only way to compare will be to pay it off in 10 or 20 years, which will be impossible probably for us. I am a homeowner and a landlord. I'm in favor of a rental registry. And I'm, we need to get the data. We don't even know how many rental homes we have in our city. Nobody knows. Um, we only know that some of the landlords do pay a, a business license. So that's an indication, but for the rest, there's a lot. It's, it's public information. I know neighbors who rent their homes and they do not have a business license from our city. So how do we know the number? I, I like data. We need to know what we're talking about. So that we can decide about potential rent control, but we need the data. Because as we all know, rent control can also backfire. And it's not simple what we're discussing. But that doesn't mean that we don't need to discuss it. And then for the rest, um, of course, we need a long-term, long-term maintenance plan. And I'm glad it's being worked on now for Abrams and Preston. Because we don't know what numbers, again, we need the data to know how much money do we need? And we need it for many more years than just the next 20 years. It needs to be at least 30, 40 years for the next roof replacement. And you just keep on going. Spreadsheets can be, it can be as long as we like to make them. And so these are my initial remarks. Thank you.
Right. Thank you very much, Elizabeth. So now let's go to the public, starting with the public that are here in person. Please come to the podium, each of you who want to speak, and you have, uh, three minutes.
Good evening, council. I'm Carl Furia and I'm one of those long-term members. I've been on ready court in Preston Park since 2003. And, and I appreciate your reports, but I also feel like you're using Preston Abrams Park as a, a bell jar curve kind of experiment for the whole city. You talk about the, uh, deed restriction affordable housing, but that also benefits the entire city for the numbers of affordable housing. So it seems like the entire city also should absorb that, that, that same responsibility. When I got my business license in Marina, I had to get the signature of my landlord to get a business license and I was charged a hundred dollars and told that's the cost of doing business. It seems to me like, you know, you own Preston Park, this is also part of the cost of doing business. And on your side, I can appreciate what you're saying, but on, on our side as the tenants are, uh, as the renters, uh, 2015 records show you paid $35 million for Preston Park. So according to, uh, public record, it says it was purchased to generate revenue. Now, the city receives, I'll, I'll average out $2,000 a month for 450 units. That's $9 million a year. Last 10 years, that's $90 million. So we asked the question, where did all that money go, especially if the loan isn't being paid down? Since its purchase, uh, we pay more than any other resident in the city of Marina, to Marina, all of our rent. And so we have to kind of ask the questions, what do we receive for that? Well, we've never had our streets swept in the 20 years I've lived there. We don't get regular police patrols. Matter of fact, we have private police patrol. When we call the police, we're told if you call us again, you'll be evicted. And I talked to two city employees before our current chief, who said that they were told not to patrol at Preston Park. So we don't have green lawns because nobody patrols vehicles parking and driving on our lawns. And I'm not going to have my water turned on to water my lawn if the neighbors are going to be parked there and driving over the sprinklers. My back patio is cracked, uh, as part of my house because the squirrels have undermined the foundation so much that there's a huge gap in the backyard. Our playgrounds, our city playgrounds that were there were all removed. Nobody seems to be enforcing some of those kind of simple things. We are afraid to complain, especially those of us who've been there longer. Because of what I heard tonight, uh, we pay less rent. Our rent has gone up every year since I've been there and I understand that. I expect that and that's fine. But, uh, now it seems like we're being kind of blamed for being good tenants and, uh, being, you know, good citizens and that we're not being charged enough. I didn't get a $2,000 a month raise, so I, I can't just say that I can afford to pay anything. It seems like we're being taxed without representation. I think we've heard that term before.
Excuse me, Carl. I have to ask you to stop.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in person?
Hi, good evening, uh, mayor and council. I am Jan Schreiner. And yes, I, I sometimes sit on the board at Marina Coast Water District as well as, the Marina, sorry, the Monterey County Democratic Central Committee, which I stumbled over the name because I just call it the MCDCC. which I stumbled over the name because I just call it the MCDCC. And from that position, I just want to acknowledge those roles. But I am really going to speak tonight as a resident of Marina and the values that our community holds. And I took a time today to lift a little of the language from the current democratic state platform. And I don't know that you are all Democrats, but this is the context that I work in. I've also been involved with the Protect Salinas Renters Signature Gathering effort so that I could learn more about rent stabilization ordinances that would be applicable to a much broader area. So from the Democratic Party platform on affordable housing, Democrats are urged to work to preserve and protect buildings that are under rent control or rent stabilization ordinance to stem the loss of affordable housing units. The Democrats support policies that ease the ability of cities, counties, or state agencies to purchase rent controlled or rent stabilized buildings that are currently exempted to preserve well maintained affordable housing stock. And Democrats protect and promote construction of affordable housing to alleviate and prevent homelessness. So I hope that you will all feel that in your role here as electeds and then as an excellent demonstration of leadership. Because I know people really are struggling out there. Been doing some canvassing and talking to some pretty stressed people. I hope you will maintain the 2010 rent stabilization resolution for Preston and Abrams and enact rent stabilization ordinances citywide for renter protection. The rental assistance programs have been problematic, but I wouldn't say that they are a mutually exclusive kind of program to rent stabilization ordinances. But also suggest use the Preston set aside funds for their intended purpose. I believe the city has a net revenue of $2 million annually. If you were to save that in 10 years, you could pay that 18.6 million as well as use the 13 million set aside for now. And as Mayor Protam Vischer pointed out, paying off a loan is the best way to save the money, right? You could own it outright. And for further, oh, and I'd like to see more details of the current study on the comparable rents.
Excuse me, Jan. I don't like to do this, but your time is up.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks, everyone, for your comments. These are good comments.
I'm just going to have to rearrange my remarks because of the things that I've learned and the things that you all have been saying. It certainly has affected my perspective. I'm James Fraser. I live in Abrams. I've lived in Marina for most of the time since 1995. Before retiring, my last job was teaching at Marina High. I also worked at KSBW for 12 years. As a side note, I'll note entry into a diatribe about Gray Star. KIYN just abruptly shut down their news operation and laid off all their reporters. They did that once before, 20 years ago, when their studio was on Garden Road. That's what profit oriented corporations do. Gray Star is a giant multinational profit oriented corporation, the largest of its type in the U.S. Their interest is not in the residents of Abrams and Preston. It's not even in their local employees. They can be laid off at any time. It's also, they don't really care about the maintenance of the place only as far as it affects their continued profit here. I think you need to look at those balance sheets again. In previous meetings, you've assured me that you audit the deal with Gray Star annually. And have you looked at those audits in detail? I urge you to be skeptical about that and make sure that they give you the information you really need. Also, I'm appreciating that you have some complexity when you're talking about the CPI and you're examining that and whether those are accurate and really apply to our specific situation. Even 3% a year, 9% in three years, my retirement income is not going up that fast. I don't think the income of my working neighbors are either. And finally, to mention, Councilwoman Bialas and Vischer's mention about the proportion of long term residents. That calls for kind of a memes test or something because many of them are retired and they're on fixed income. Thank you.
Thank you very much, James. And for all you did at Marine High School. Have us wonderful.
Good evening. My name is Carl Pfeifer, and I'm a resident at Ready Court out at Preston Park. I already had a prepared statement that kind of warned of the dangers of AI generated data when looking at price increases. The Department of Justice already has some very interesting things to say about it and the Ninth Circuit, which is our circuit. But after hearing the remarks today, I think it's actually a lot more important that I bring up a kind of value that hasn't been mentioned. Because we've talked a lot about market value. We haven't talked a lot about human value. I, in fact, remember Bruce coming out to our housing units to come say hello to people. But I can't recall seeing anybody else here. And if you're thinking about increasing the amount of rents on people who are already struggling in what are some of our most dire economic times that I can remember, I'd urge you to come on out and come meet some of us. Come see the communities, see where the kids play, meet these families. Because these communities really have become a haven here in Marina. It's great to see kids out playing, riding their bikes. And all of that could easily go away with very, very little extra increase in rent. I'd challenge all of you here to go do that before you make any decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Anyone else in the room that wants to speak before we go online? Okay, let's go to Adam. Ben Turitz, welcome, Adam. Good night, Carl. Adam, if you could please unmute, we're ready to go. We might come back to you, Adam, give you a few more seconds. Okay, let's go to Denise Turley, and then we'll come back to Adam.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening, Denise.
Okay, so I'm going to deviate a little bit from my, there seems to be general confusion amongst the folks sitting on the dais between what is rent stabilization and what is rent control. We are not, we have nothing to do with rent control. What we're asking for is rent stabilization. And not rent stabilization because we're the favored few, who, by the way, are not whining about having our rents raised. You haven't heard that from a single person. We are asking that you stabilize rents citywide for Marina, and then you won't need a helper renter fund. So I will start with my prepared remarks, which are that Gray Star is in trouble and is supposed to stay away from AI. I'm surprised that you mentioned there that they are in fact involved in AI. I also, we've been asked in the past why there's a disparity in rents here, and it's because the 2010 council failed to enact vacancy control along with rent stabilization. And units were allowed to flip to market rather than to stay affordable. The numbers given for the affordable units do not match deed restrictions. Deed restrictions, yes, there are one for each property add up to 187 units. And finally, I will end with, do you really truly understand the benefits of rent stabilization? It has certainly proven that our concerns about data manipulation have come true in inflated rents. Rents in Marina have gone up more than five times the total of CPI for 15 years. Wages, pensions, and income have not. Keep existing statute and apply citywide stabilized rents in all of Marina. That's how you help people who are struggling. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Denise, and for all your time at the Preston Park Renters Association. Let's go to Audra Walton. Welcome, Audra.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, and public. My name is Audra Walton. I'm a long term member of Marina and I have a lifelong member of the Black American Freedman Community of Monterey County who migrated here from the South. My father was born here on the base. My mother was born on a base in Hawaii. They met here, married, gave birth to me. I gave birth to all three of my children here. My sister's daughter gave birth to our fourth generation here. I'm your vice chair on the Planning Commission, but speaking as a resident of Preston Park. With respect to those long term Preston and Abrams Park residents that have been here since the late 90s and early 2000s, I need you to see us as initial investors. Those of us who raised their children here since they were two and three years old, when they were just, there were just three streets open. I need you to see how our stable rents help you to build our, our Preston and Abrams Park as we held on to the idea that we were locked into a rent to own situation. When I moved here, the rentals were restricted to military personnel, their families, which I was one, my husband was in the army at the time, and emergency services. It was safe here, and I thank the city for that. In exchange, the city has received my rent on time since 1997. I should be receiving my deed in two years. I'm nearing retirement. I bought this home, just maybe not the land. I'm a Black American Freedman, a direct descendant of those who were enslaved under the institutions of US American chattel slavery and a 50 year resident of the peninsula. I've been here a lot longer than most of you here on the dais. And I've been stable here in Preston Park, right? As I watched the rest of the peninsula, my population washed out from the peninsula. I, because of the city and their decision to stabilize rates here for me, I have been able to stay here and be stable for my children. Again, I thank the city for that. Because I just also thank you for the understanding that you are discussing real humans with real histories here in Marina and the peninsula. Let that mean something to you. We are the initial investors that believed in the city and stuck around with our stable rents to help build out both Preston and Abrams Park. See our humanity as well as the broken promises of rent to own. Stabilize the rent. Thank you.
Thank you, Audra. Let's go to Shar Thompson. Welcome, Shar.
Hi, good evening, Marina Councilman Mayor. I'm Shar Thompson. I'm the Central California Regional Coordinator with Tenants Together. We are a statewide nonprofit organization that focuses on housing rights and housing justice. I have the pleasure of working alongside some of the tenants in each region, including Marina, to support them in better understanding their rights, empower them to exert their rights, and urge local governments like yours to keep the city safe, decent, affordable for all to live in versus adding to the roadmap to displacement. We know that rent stabilization in Preston and Abrams should not be repealed for various reasons. It was a resolution made for the community that benefits not just those living at Preston or Abrams, but the entire rental community in Marina, which is 60.7% of the Marina households. By holding the line on the rent increases in the overall market, we keep Marina intact as a diverse community. Increasing the rents will also have repercussions in the surrounding communities as well as the displacement that occurs in your city. Rent stabilization is a simple, time tested, and common sense reform that would provide real housing security to hundreds of Marina residents. We believe that housing is a human right, not a commodity. So please put your constituents over your profit. When making your decision, keep in mind this would keep the opportunity for tenants to have the ability to keep the stable housing they need to lead decent and dignified lives. Don't take the word of a bad actor like Gray Star, who is tied up in legal systems, in the legal system currently. Thank you so much for your time, and I'll give my time back.
Thank you, Shar.
Have a great night.
You too. Let's go to Esther. Welcome, Esther.
Good evening, everybody. Esther Malkin, founder of Monterey County Renters United and a board member on the California Democratic Renters Council. That was instrumental in passing the resolution that was read to you earlier from the democratic state platform by Jan Schreiner. I wanted to mention that renter assistance is not a substitute for rent stabilization. The number one tool you have, and we have county data showing that the number one reason why people become homeless is financial, and rent is at the top of that list. So if you're interested in preventing homelessness in your city, this is something that you need to consider. I also wanted to mention that I find it interesting that you have a city manager that lives in a four bedroom house for I don't know how long on the salary we know all city managers make, and he recused himself. But yet, how many of you on that dais right now are rental property owners? That seems like it's a conflict of interest to try and create policy on something that's going to affect your incomes directly. So I urge you to consider, you know, how the optics of that are. We also know that we now have a permanent renter class. Homeownership is not part of most people's ability to stay where they are living anymore. And the point to point website just shows that renters outnumber homeowners now in 203 metro suburbs. That is growing. That number is growing. We cannot discount the renter population anymore because they are voters. And in a city that has majority renters as its residents, everyone who runs for council and any other elected position needs to remember that renters are voters. And as the majority, they can make or break who sits in the seats that you occupy right now. So I urge you to listen to your renter population. You could be setting a good example and be good stewards to that population and continue the policies that you have in place. Or you can go back on what was the original sentiment on creating these properties and pay the consequences of homelessness and a multitude of other things. So I urge you to make it a point to listen to these residents that are the majority in your city. Thank you.
Thank you, Esther, and thanks for all your hard work on tenant rights and affordability. Let's go to Heather. Welcome, Heather.
Good evening, council members. My name is Heather Spears, and I've been a Preston Park resident for nine years. I'm a veteran, a nurse, a wife, and a mother raising an autistic eight year old in our public schools. I know what service means. I serve this country in uniform. I know what service means. I served this country in uniform. I served this city through the pandemic as an infection prevention nurse while my husband kept essential services running as a mechanic. We showed up, we paid our rent, we stayed solid when everything else was uncertain. And tonight, I need you to show that same commitment back to the families of Preston and Abrams. Here's the reality. Our neighborhood already contributes millions every year to the city's general fund. Now we're being told that our reserves, the money built entirely from our rents, should be diverted to fund citywide projects and debt refinancing. I have to ask, why is one neighborhood being forced to carry the weight of the entire city? Why is the burden not shared across all of Marina and through the general fund? And let's look at how this proposal is being justified. The staff report leans on inflated market comparisons, including property managed by Gray Star, the very company under the Department of Justice antitrust litigation for rent fixing. To use tainted numbers like that to drive policy is not just questionable, it undermines the moral legitimacy of this process. Affordable housing should not be held hostage to manipulate market data. It was never intended to be a cash cow for city projects. For my family, the impact is devastating. Today, we pay $2,399 for a three-bedroom. A CPI-only increase adds $72 a month. That's manageable. But under your proposed scenario, CPI plus extras or so-called market rents of 3,000 to 34, my family would face $7,000 to $12,000 more a year. Even households making $125,000 would become cost burdened. And here in Marina, where the median household income is 88, families would be destabilized overnight. This is not just a local issue. Nationwide costs of food, gas, healthcare have risen over 20% in the last few years while wages have lagged behind. Families who carried this city through the pandemic are already stretched thin. Now load on extra thousands of dollars a month on our backs is not investment. It's extrication and it's targeted sacrifice of one neighborhood over citywide needs. I stand here tonight as a veteran, as a nurse, as a mother, and as your neighbor. I'm not asking you to stop investing in Marina. I'm asking you to invest fairly. Do not destabilize the families who kept this city going. Do not make Preston and Abrams the city ATM. And do not break the promise of affordability and stability that brought us here in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Let's go to Paula Palau. Welcome, Paula. Hello. You look good to go, Paula.
This is Paula Palau for the Preston and Abrams Parks Tenants Association. City-promised residents in 2010 to raise rents were in-place sentenced by CPI or 3%, whichever was the less. And now you're considering reneging on that promise. You say it's because we're paying less for the units than the more recently moved in tenants. And that's only because the city of Marina failed to include vacancy control in the rent resolutions. Also, the cities failed for the last 15 years to enact rent stabilization citywide and provide those very same protections to all Marina citizens, which could have been done for the 60.7% of Marina households who are renters. In the ensuing years, CPI has only risen 47.4%, but rents in Marina have risen 262%. Yet you've done nothing towards enacting rent protections and rent stabilization citywide. So now you propose to penalize those of us who've been protected while paying our rent timely and providing a fair rate of return for the city. You shouldn't be reneging on these protections but expanding them to the entire renter population in Marina. Now, 100% of this council are homeowners, either of homes inside Marina or in neighboring towns. The privilege of homeownership is not likely to come to our renters. You homeowners are making decisions for us that will negatively impact us while lecturing. Anecdotally, someone out here pays low rent while owning a home elsewhere. Do you really believe that increasing their rent by CPI plus 5% the state borrowed this year will pause them to move out or sell their home? Really? Is anyone on the council in this privileged position of renting here in Marina but owning a home someplace else? Is there anyone on the council who in fact owns multiple homes? Another complaint is that the city's leaving millions on the table. And that mathematically in any year is just not the case, even if you remove the rent resolutions. But leaving millions on the table is what the city has done in multiple business transactions this year and another year. So it seems it's okay to do it when it's corporations, but it's not okay when it's your renter constituents. Would the homeowners on the council think it would be okay if the state removed your Prop 13 tax privilege? Or if your mortgage companies increased your interest by up to 10% every year? Some on the council suggested that there are people in Preston Abrams who don't need a discount. And we respond by saying that our rents are not discounted. They are spot on with what they should be in accordance with CPI from 1997 to 2025. That they're out of alignment with the surrounding community is a function of the city's failure to enact rent stabilization. The disparity is because of what the US Department of Justice charged Gray Star with in their recently settled antitrust lawsuit for artificially inflating rents using AI algorithms. That's the cause of disparity. Keep the resolutions in place and enact citywide rent control.
Thank you. Thank you, Paula, and thank you for all your work at the Preston Park and Abrams Renters Tenant Association. Okay, let's go to Linda.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I would like to speak to the misconceptions about this counted rent. And it is important to recognize the unique position of long-term residents who entered into original contracts with the city. As residents who signed original contracts, we have consistently paid more over time for our units than we would have if the city had honored its initial commitment to sell these units to us. The city's decision to continue renting rather than offering us the promised rent-to-own option represents a significant breach of trust. Had the city followed through, many of us would now own homes, possibly elsewhere, and would not be in our current position. The failure to fulfill this promise has deprived us of homeownership, the opportunity for homeownership, and the stability it brings. It is crucial to highlight that those of us who are grandfathered in, so to speak, have paid substantially more in rent over the past three decades compared to newcomers. This financial burden underscores the inequity faced by long-term residents and challenges the perception that we have benefited from discounted rent. There's a persistent misconception that the original contracts included discounted rent. In reality, no such discount was ever written into our agreements. Instead, our leases have seen regular increases strictly adhering to the provisions laid out in the contracts. This means that our rent has consistently risen, reflecting the terms we agreed upon, and not any form of special treatment or reduced rate. In summary, the city's actions have resulted in long-term residents paying far more than newcomers without the benefit of homeownership or discounted rent. These facts should be central to any discussion about maintaining or repealing housing protections. Our experience reflect a need for fairness, transparency, and the recognition of the promises made and broken by the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Linda. And I'm glad you've been able to be at Preston since the beginning, it sounds like. Okay, Adam, we're gonna try again. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Appreciate your patience while I overcame some technical difficulties there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your great questions early on. I appreciate Councilwoman Vischer's acknowledgement that regulation can have these unintended consequences. I'm a renter in Marina, by the way. I also appreciate Councilmember Bialas' prudence and principles in speaking about the most good for the most residents, right? What is really the most helpful and the best in terms of upward mobility? And I also appreciate Councilmember McAdams for bringing up rental assistance, which proved during the pandemic to help those who need help most while avoiding unintended consequences. Rent stabilization, I think it's important to point out, would not apply to all rentals or target those who need the help the most. Due to state law, it would only apply to rentals older than 1995. That happens to include my rental, so I would directly benefit from rental assistance. But candidly, I'm fortunate enough that my wife and I work very hard. We're raising a family here, but we're doing okay. And frankly, other people I know need the help more. So I speak in favor of a targeted approach of rental assistance. Let's look into that more because that will actually go towards the people who need it most, not just the people who happen to be in older rentals. Because that's just arbitrary. It's a one-size-fits-all solution. And as was mentioned earlier, it has unintended consequences. So I appreciate the good discussion and the research and diligence on the part of staff. And I can tell from your questions and your comments, council members, that I think you'll deliberate wisely and make the right decision in this particular case here. And I look forward to our conversations moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Let's go to Mike Muller. Welcome, Mike.
Good evening, Council and staff. Wow, Paula's speech was wonderful. I loved it. But I just have some questions. It looks like it's kind of been covered, so it's no surprise to you. But with the DOJ's ongoing antitrust case over their algorithmic pricing, why is the city relying on potential artificially inflated market rents to guide public policy? Given the city via Gray Star sets and tracks its own current new lease rents, what decision-critical information did that third-party market study provide that the city didn't already have? Or were you guys trying to separate yourself from Gray Star in this matter? I know that the turnover is low for obvious reasons, but I'm curious if you will consider any future turnover projections, say the next three to five years, when calculating the city's income need? I know the higher debt service scenario, you know, changes when you divert that 13 million to other facilities, but I'm curious, why is the rent policy being tied to a discretionary choice to reallocate these funds? You know, in the city's on-budget reports and financial planning documents, there are terms such as fiscally strong, healthy reserves, balanced operations, and new major projects underway. But in this report, that picture flips. Suddenly, we're told that the city can't meet its loan obligations or maintain its property without increasing rent. So that inconsistency kind of raises some questions about transparency and how this information is being framed for both the council and the public, depending on what kind of narrative that you want to spin. Look, I'm a landlord myself and I understand this is a business, okay? But most renters already face a lack of stability with more frequent moves, rent spikes, a higher risk of displacement, which could put emotional strain on our neighbors. And by offering something that other cities dream of, we're in a unique position to own these kind of units. And I don't know, it would be nice if we can continue to offer this luxury of stability where these tenants, many of them may not even get the opportunity to have generational wealth like everybody on the dais does and myself. So I just want you to consider that, that the Preston Abrams tenants, they're human beings, not profit. So choose wisely and remember, renters vote.
Thank you, Mike. Let's go to John and Kendra. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome, Kendra.
Okay. My name is Kendra Kibbers and I am here as a concerned resident of Preston Park to urge you not to revoke the Preston and Abrams resolution. This agreement has served as an essential protection for renters in my community. Many are families, seniors on fixed incomes, and young adults just entering the workforce. After graduating from CSU Monterey Bay in 2014 and receiving a local job offer, I needed an affordable and safe place to live. Thankfully, Preston Park had an opening when I needed it. Living in Preston with the resolution intact has given my husband and I the stability to create a stronger foundation for ourselves. It has allowed us to pay off our student loans, pay for emergencies, and hopefully one day purchase the home in the city. If this agreement is revoked and rent increases will default to the state's allowance, which is currently up to 10% per year, this will have a major impact in mine and my neighbor's stability and security. As a professional in the community and a household with two moderate salaries, my husband and I cannot afford to move or purchase a home in the area. Since this resolution was implemented, CPI has risen 47.4%, but rents in Marina have exploded by 262%. This spike reflects artificially inflated price-fixed rents which was cited in the DOJ's antitrust lawsuit against Gray Star. With an uncertain economic future ahead, removing this local protection will only add more strain. The Central Coast is not affordable. If this resolution were to be revoked and rents increased significantly, where do you expect people to go? We're not just talking about individuals being priced out. We're talking about teachers, nurses, service workers, responders, the people who keep the city running. When they're forced out, we lose more than tenants. We lose volunteers, PTA members, Little League coaches, caregivers, and customers who support our local businesses. We lose diversity, culture, and economic balance, something that this city celebrates. Council, you should not be discussing how to repeal renter protections. You should be discussing how to expand them. This resolution should be used as a model. It has protected residents while providing the city with a significant surplus. Preston Abrams pays 100% of its own operations. It pays 100% of its capital improvements and its debt service. Renters are the majority in the city, 60.7% of all households. Rent stability matters to everyone. Please think about the people this decision impacts. Do not let short-term pressures override long-term stability. Keep the 2010 Preston Abrams resolution in place. Please protect our renters and preserve our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Kendra. Let's go to Greg Fury. Welcome, Greg.
Can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
All right. Good evening, Council. Well, let me see. Let me see if I can get the timer up. I'm not seeing the timer because I'm blocked here. Okay, well, Council, good evening. You're faced with a simple choice tonight. Are you gonna honor the commitment made to the community or will you break it for profit? I don't want to be redundant because some of the things I wanted to say are heard already, but I may be a little bit redundant for which I apologize. Let's be clear about the finances because the argument for repeal is not really based on need. Preston Abrams rentals have been a big financial success. Preston more than funds its entire existence, all operations, capital projects, and its debt. You're paying for everything. It still injects a couple of million dollars of pure profit into the city's general fund every year. There's a large leftover surplus. It's built up a $15 million loan paydown fund. It's not a burden. It is a revenue driver, a revenue engine. Think about this. The homeowners in Marina are rightly guaranteed the stability by Prop 13. Now, I have my own opinion about Prop 13, but it is a law. You would never dream of stripping of that protection legally. You probably, you couldn't. Preston Abrams residents are asking for the same principle. The security, no, they won't be priced out of their own homes. Why is their stability less valuable? And the market you want to throw them into is predatory. I don't laugh when I hear about Gray Star being quoted for anything. It's like throwing the fox into the hen house and establishing as some sort of certainty or principle or benchmark for anything. Not a free market. As you already heard, 262% explosion in increased local rents, completely pastured and 47.4% rent inflation. Direct result of price fiction collusion antitrust lawsuit DOJ brought against RealPage and Gray Star, your current property manager. Your constituents are not an asset to be squeezed. They are the community you were elected to protect. Don't punish the residents providing you a surplus. Uphold the resolution. Your mandate is to find the courage to protect all of Marina's renters, not abandon a few. And I would say that Councilmember Vischer brought something up that I think I agree with very much, which is look after, raise some revenue, go after the business permits. I'm amazed at how, I mean, I bet you would be amazed at how much revenue is missing because the company that was hired, last I understood, really hasn't done its job and the city hasn't been after them to do it. Go after people who should be providing business permit rental rates to the city. You guys could very easily consolidate your fire protection. You could save a couple of hundreds of thousands of dollars, I'd be willing to bet. A lot of different options. You guys gave yourself a raise. You're all homeowners. You could be very easily considered a privileged class. As it been already mentioned, people vote. So the one last question is, why has the Renters Association from Preston Park effectively been excluded from negotiations and discussions over the past few years? Ms. Palau, who stood up and talked, probably has forgotten more than all of you together collectively know about the history of Preston.
I'm sorry to do this, Greg.
Oh, no, that's okay. No, I appreciate you. I appreciate the time. Thank you very much. Good luck in your decisions.
Okay, let's go to Gail Morton. Welcome, Gail.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. I had a couple.
Yeah, that was my fault. I'm sorry. Gail, if you could come back to us, your three minutes is waiting.
Am I?
Yeah, let's start again, Gail. That was my fault. I apologize.
Thank you. I just wanted to look at the loan information that's provided. When this loan was done back nearly ten years ago, the property Preston Park was earning three point five million, which was being split one point seven five to the four door reuse authority, and the city depended on one point seven five going into its coffers. When I look at the Preston Park profile appearing on page six that was presented, it appears that now the rents have been increased based even on the with the stabilization in place. And you're looking at that you are earning about five million, which is allocated. So that is with your rent stabilization in place. The concept of putting money aside, having the city restricted to how much was going into its general coffers was to put the city in the position it is today, which is you have approximately fifteen million that either can be used to pay down this loan, if you wish to do so, or potentially be used for other purposes. When I'm looking at page six and this Preston Park profile, and I'm looking at what you would have to use to finance with the city continuing to receive two million in its general funds, you would have one million five hundred and forty one thousand, your current debt service money, plus the one million seven hundred and fifty six thousand that is being set aside, which means you do have three million two hundred and ninety seven thousand dollars a year and can do a fully amortized loan should you wish to finance, again, going back to page three. So I think that there is the ability to use the thirteen million for other items or some scheme in between the two extremes, as many of the council members have asked for further direction. And I know that interest rates are going to impact that. But what's important here is how much money is generated with your rent stabilization in place. And the refinancing being piggybacked on terminating this rent stabilization is not necessary. The property is generating the money. You have plenty of choices here and options in the refinancing, and the property can more than afford paying for it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Gail, and thank you for all your hard work on City Council and at FORA. Okay, let's go to John. Welcome, John.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Evening. My name is John How, Preston Park, Ready Court. I've been here for fifteen years. My wife is Kendra, who you heard from recently. Just in general, very proud of being a member of Marina, especially tonight after hearing everything from all my city members. You know, I had something written, but I just wanted to kind of talk off the cuff based on a lot of good points people have said. You know, there's just a couple straightforward messages, you know, for the finance person, you know, can we just get a straight answer, the the back and forth and oh, maybe this, maybe that is not very settling. No, Bruce, I do appreciate that you do go out to the community and but, you know, just as far as forgetting us first and things like that, you know, actions speak louder than words, but I do believe you you do have the best intentions for us. I hope you continue to fight for us. Jenny, I don't I don't know about us, like us, as renters. You know, there there may be some homeownership out there that doesn't really qualify you as like us. Kathy, you know, a little bit of cowardice there pushing the buck on I just I don't understand how, don't don't ask me. You know, Lee's Biff, I hope I'm pronouncing that okay, you know, it it did really seem like you cared, so thank you for your comments and your tone. Just in general, you know, Carl's points were amazing about the housing structures and the support we get for some of the agriculture and the watering the lawns. Why would we water our sand? You know, bringing up home prices is just not a fair, we're just not in that market to even be compared to, even with, you know, decent paying jobs. Our income is going up as fast, let alone these people's retirements going up at all. I believe Gray Star actually suppressed my community's ability to even know about tonight or prepare for it. I would like some PowerPoints and details of all the things you plan to do with this money you're you're trying to get. And no limited internet options in Preston Park. We still don't have anything outside of Optimum or something, something minor from AT&amp;T or some satellite options, just ridiculous. And, you know, please just choose to invest in us and not capital, human capital, like Carl said. So thank you for your time. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you very much, John. Anyone else who would like to speak that hasn't spoken, please raise your hand via remote. All right. Not seeing anyone raise their hand. We'll close public comment. Thank you, everyone, for that extensive public comment time that you shared with us. First thing we do by practice, we go over questions. Had a couple of questions from I don't know who, Mike, I think. Yes, this is Mike. What third party information was obtained for the city that couldn't have been obtained or wasn't already known? So what was the value to the city of the third party information?
The city wanted to, because there was some controversy surrounding Gray Star, the city wanted to go out and and seek a third party opinion just to give the tenants more confidence in in the market rental rate numbers. And the person who did the study actually came in a little bit higher than what Gray Star has been doing. And it was looking at some of the parameters. Again, the market can change for three and four bedroom homes. But it seemed like it was right in range with the the two bedroom units. And really, we do have representatives from Gray Star here as well that can talk a little bit about their methodology, but they are not using AI. There was Hello Data AI, which was like a third cross check that we looked at. But we're really comparing what Gray Star goes out and looks at using the city's policy, those particular units, to try to define what the monthly rent for new tenants should be. And then us seeking a third party to just help us validate that in lieu of some of the controversy that has come out.
Thank you. Mike also asked, why is rent policy being connected to the bond choices of how to fund public facilities that we need? You want to take a shot at that, Tori? If not, that's okay.
It was, this was an overall Preston and Abrams financial review, so part of it did include a discussion on like a pre discussion as far as what would what would be required for debt service. In relation to rents, they could be viewed almost as three separate items. The only piece that could have an impact is you know, if the council chose to go with the highest method, that would be two point, I don't have the number handy, but it would be closer to two point six million dollars in debt service, should the council not use the thirteen million. And we placed that out there because it was brought up at a previous meeting that perhaps that thirteen million could be used. So we wanted to present that scenario as well.
And I think Mike may have been referring to the connection to Measure U, Plan B, Fire Station, Police Station, Community Center needs for that bond. And I think that the answer is that nothing is in isolation. When we have budget meetings or Preston Park meetings or Measure U next step meetings, people talk about Preston Park, you know, what's going on in Preston Park? What are the ways that Preston Park could be part of the solution for bonding for new facilities? So it's come up in citizen meetings, and of course, we have to consider all possible ideas. So it comes up in our city council discussion meetings as well. Okay. Did anyone note questions that that haven't been covered? Okay, not seeing any ideas there. If I was missed 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 questions. Okay, so now we come back to council, and we're going to start with Councilman McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank those that spoke. It takes a lot of guts, quite frankly, to come and talk about the place where you live, right? Your home, it's supposed to be your safe space and the the guts that it takes to do that resonates with me, so I appreciate that. And I also want to start by acknowledging a few truths that I hold. And frankly, I heard them echoed by all my colleagues on the council and and the public. So I think in a lot of ways, we're all on the same page. And I think that's really an inspiring start. And that is, you know, one, I mean, not to be cliche, but the rents are too damn high in this city. They are too high, and we all know that. Number two, I'm a Preston Park renter. In fact, over fifteen years ago, I moved from Sunday, a comparable that's listed in this report. And I moved to Preston Park where I found a little slice of heaven. The property is incredible. It's a great, great place to live. You know, you're talking about properties where it's basically the equivalent of one unit per quarter acre because there's just a tremendous amount of wild and open space there. It's just a really neat place to be, and I'm grateful that the city has the opportunity to own it. Number three, we, the council, play a very important role in this problem of the rents being too high, and it's a role that I take very seriously. Number three, and you've heard me say this before, but the issue of rents is incredibly nuanced. It's not only about rents being high, but it's about wage disparities. It's about young people not making enough money to be able to afford the rents that their counterparts, you know, might be able to afford. So it's it's a very complex issue, right? Five, as with all issues, I'm convinced that not everyone's going to get what they want, but I hope that everyone gets what they need when we're done with this issue. And then finally, I believe that no other city does more to meet the affordable housing issue than the city of Marina. And I think it's something that we all should be very proud of. And I, quite frankly, I think it's something that a lot of people recognize, and I think that deserves being mentioned. Digging into the rents, kind of doing the math as we talk here, and I'm and I'm noticing that on the more extreme ends, there are some units that appear to be about two thousand a month lower per month than market. So again, doing the math, that's twenty four thousand dollars of subsidy a year for those units. Those those owners, to get to that point, have probably been there twenty or thirty years. But let's just assume they've been ten to fifteen years. If I'm doing the math right, that's a quarter million dollars of subsidy given to one homeowner, one renter, rather. A quarter million dollars of subsidized rent, which is what it is. And I am so grateful that we have been able to subsidize that rent. It has provided people opportunity unlike opportunity you're likely to find anywhere else. And in fact, it's interesting because a couple of members of the public asked us, and it's a fair question. What have you done with this rental money, right? And so my question to some might be, what benefit has the subsidy provided? And what I've heard from some people that did live in Preston is they told me I've been able to go buy a house. I was able to move out and, you know, and and move laterally in a way that afforded me homeownership. And so I'm so grateful that the city of Marina has provided those opportunities to people. There's a CNN article that talks about one of the biggest issues of the housing crisis is that there isn't that movement within within housing, right? People aren't buying up because they can't afford to, and I and I get that, right? It's not a criticism to people in in tough economic situations. But it's a very different paradigm than fifty years ago when you bought a starter house and you rented for ten years, and then you moved up, and then that opportunity to belong to somebody else. People don't have those opportunities anymore. And again, that's another problem that I'm hoping that the city of Marina can aim to address. So again, I mean, I'm just really taken aback by the amount of, again, what I would call a subsidy. And I don't, that's not a negative term, right? It's just, it's a reality of what we're looking at here. It's pretty dramatic. Quarter million dollars for one, one unit. Can you imagine what that money might do? And I'm not suggesting go down this road, but if we were to spread it out in a different way, I mean, there's a lot, you know, you time that times the quarter million by twenty. Right? What's that, five million dollars of subsidies? So a lot of really important issues here. I'm glad we're not making any decisions tonight because I'm not prepared to make them. But I am prepared to have the discussion. I'm prepared to listen to the public. I'm prepared to I I like the idea of of, as Councilmember Vischer said, getting the data for citywide rental problems that happen that occurs in Marina. What I know is that the corporate ownership of housing is so much larger today than it was when I first moved to this city. And that's a huge problem because they do control the market and they do, maybe not control, they influence the market, right? As opposed to, you know, ten thousand individual homeowners where the market behaves a little bit differently. So I'm gonna, I know I've probably gone over my five minutes. I'm gonna leave it at that for now, but I'm really grateful to be having this conversation. And I look forward to hearing what my colleagues have to say. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Brian. I want to start by saying the official affordable units that are defined as affordable units, deed restricted affordable units in Preston and Abrams are not part of this discussion unless we don't do a good job maintaining them or maintaining their neighborhoods, which we hope to do. We hope we're already doing it. We hope we've been doing it for a while. But just to start out with that, the affordable units, the affordable homes in Preston Park and Abrams Park are not part of this discussion. So if you have an affordable unit that's officially affordable, we're not talking about those tonight. It's unlikely that we would make a decision in the near future or the distant future to not have rent control, to not have rent stabilization at Abrams Park or Preston Park. I don't hear that on the dais that we want to stop rent stabilization at Preston Park for those unofficially more affordable units that have lower rents due to having rent stabilization of three percent or CPI or whatever is less between those two every year since two thousand and ten. We're, it's not a choice tonight. We're not discussing, should we have rent control or not? And a lot of the comment is, don't take away rent control. And I think I'm guessing that all five of us agree with that, but but that's not something that I see in the staff report of, you know, if we obliterated rent stabilization, if we obliterated the three percent and we just charge everybody market rate, how much money would we make? I don't see that in the staff report. That's not something we ask for. We primarily were getting at how much money is it costing to give a lot of residents rent stabilization without even knowing if they need it? If I'm an accountant in nineteen ninety seven and I moved into Preston Park and I was young in my career, and then I moved up, but I stayed there, or I retired with a good pension, I'm still getting the the least rent in the city. Do I need it? Does the city need to keep giving that accountant, me, if I was the accountant, that kind of a rent? Or can that accountant afford more rent? How do we know? If that accountant can afford more of the rent and that accountant is pocketing a thousand dollars or more a month by staying in Preston Park and then investing that money somewhere else, that's using community dollars for private gain, and that's not really what this was about. We, the city, wanted Preston Park to maintain in city ownership because we were afraid that the four door reuse authority was going to sell it this Friday on Craigslist because that was their threat to us. When they jointly owned Preston Park, they were threatening because they held title, even though they only had 50%, we had 50%, that they didn't, they were going to do what they wanted if we didn't buy them out. And so we bought them out for two reasons. Number one, we wanted to maintain affordable rents in Marina, not the official ones so much, but the unofficial ones. And we thought we were doing, we were fulfilling a big role and an example by setting aside 500 plus units that would be affordable to the working class. And so we went, we hardly raised the rent very much. And then in 2010, we codified it in a policy, but before 2010, it was really no different. We weren't raising the rents more than 3% anyway. Maybe once or twice a year, they raised by four or 5%. But we were very good landlords as far as rent. We never, we didn't do as good a job maintaining them as we should have. And now we're doing much better maintaining them. I'll stop there and see if anyone else wants to go around robin. Let's go to Councilmember Biella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to tag along what you were saying, and that was my question because this is maybe rumor, I don't know, but it seems like we have heard this comment before that there are some renters in Preston and/or Abrams that could afford more and because of the longevity have not been. And so my question is to you, since you brought this up, Mr. Mayor, is there any way with, with market rate renter rentals, is there any way to assess that? I mean, I don't know if that's illegal or it's, you can, you can only do that if you have like a below market rate program like we do for the affordable units. So I don't know, but it seems like it's a perennial issue that comes up. And so I would like to know, is this true? And how can we discern this? And then if we discern that it is true, then how can we mitigate this? So I don't know who answers that question, but maybe I'll just go.
I'll turn over to the city attorney.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I would have to look at whether there would, the city would have the ability. I mean, it raises questions in my mind concerning sort of privacy. I mean, with affordable units, you have to collect certain data in order for people to live in those units. If you were requesting information of others, usually it's a basis for whether they can afford the rent, whether it exceeds a certain, you know, rent to income ratio.
Exactly.
But whether it's above that, I mean, and you're asking for that information just to verify whether for another purpose, I think it, I'd have to see whether there are any restrictions.
Okay.
It does raise some questions in my mind.
Okay, yes. And I would like to get a definitive answer. So we either put that to rest and never have to, you know, use this as a way in which we feel a little uncomfortable about what we're doing on the market rate. So I'd like to see that that happens. Also, I would like to thank all of the public speakers online and in the, in person because I know this is emotionally charged, it's emotionally charged for those of us in the dais too, to make these kind of heavy decisions. But every one of you have been civil and respectful in your, in your opinions and we truly, truly appreciate that. I had put on our priority list that grew to the budget priority list, a consolidated list has now, I think, 140 or whatever. A long time ago, I put in rental registry. It has never risen to the, to the top of the focus for our budget review. But I have watched, for example, the city of Monterey go through a process in which just a rental registry, just trying to have a database so we know what kind of rents are being charged out there is, is, is a volatile issue. So when we talk about rental, rental stabilization or rental control, it's loaded. Believe me, I've watched and seen what happens in a community when you suggest these kinds of things. So please, these are, these are topics that are extremely difficult and the community gets very riled up about it. So even my request for just a simple registry would have also brought a lot of different viewpoints to the table and ones that would be pretty angry, I would say, for those who are the landlords. And so this is not to be taken lightly, just so that we know for the future. Just FYI, whether I can say that it's quantifiably true or not, when, when Councilmember Vischer and I attended a recent event commemorating an opening or yet one year anniversary of a mental health clinic in town, one of the public officials said that Marina has, has more affordable units than all of the cities put together. So I just want you to understand that we pride ourselves on this. And Carl, I appreciated the fact that you said that Abrams and Preston has contributed to that meeting of our RENA numbers, which we exceed far above any, any other cities. And so it is a source of pride, but it's also a commitment that I think our city has done and done very well, including everybody up on this dais. I also want to say that when we talk about this issue and we, and one of the speakers, I think it was Mike Muller, was questioning why we're bringing up the whole issues of the, of the civic centers and the Measure U and all of that. And again, it's because we can't speak of these things as a revenue source, okay? Irrespective of the, the value of humanity. Besides that, this is a revenue source for Marina. And as we've said many times in budget review, we are only legally able to have four sources of income. And some of them are pretty wretched. Property tax, people feel like, you know, we're, we're building all the time. We ought to have tons of money coming in for a property tax. And the reality is we get only 16% of the tax that is collected. So Marina is, is, is not getting wealthy off of our property tax. So when we look at the other legitimate ways, we don't have a UUT tax and almost everyone around us does because that's one of the other few legitimate ways we can collect revenue. So when we look at Preston Park and we say it is a revenue source for us, then we have to consider that too. Measure U did not achieve the 67%. We got very high, 60%. But it did not include a tax to renters and yet we were not able to reach that 67 percentage. So, so, so because of that, we're now having to, to look at every source where it's possible that we can get up to 50 million to build those, replace our 50-year-old portable civic center. So there are other pressures on our city. And so forgive us if, if you feel that, you know, we're looking at every revenue source that we can possibly dig up at this point because some of the ones that we had hoped for did not pass. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Let's go to Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to everyone who provided public comment this evening and for sharing, you know, your stories and perspectives. I wanted to just piggyback on Councilmember Biella with regards to our RENA numbers. You know, we also have veteran housing, domestic violence housing, mental health transitional housing, shelter beds. I mean, we are really doing that work and not just talking about it. I mean, we have beds and doors to show for that. So I too am also very proud of our city. The housing programs manager position has been vacant forever and it's one of those fully funded positions that sits empty. And other cities who don't do hardly any building have housing program manager. So why are we not connecting those dots? I did hear that perhaps it'll be posted by the end of October. And I've heard that before from the city manager, you know, several months ago. And so for me, I just want to put that on record that we need that guidance. You know, we need that expertise. We can't just blend it into an assistant city manager or our financial services director. We can't just chunk it into the airport manager. And no, we need that position and we need that specific expertise. I also am hearing that this council really cares about housing and our residents and we see that in the work. And I too appreciate and support a registry. And also we need to think about banning short-term rentals and opening up that inventory. I mean, our neighborhoods should be for our neighbors and our full-time residents. We have tons of hotel accommodations and more coming. So, you know, I would prefer to see that inventory open up for our people and not investors. And more and more and more houses are being swooped up, full cash, you know, sight unseen. And they're either sitting or they're short-term renting. We don't really know because we don't have a housing programs manager to manage that program. So I'm curious about the play structures that were removed during the pandemic. I've asked, I know all of us have asked about that, you know, I mean, at least a year ago, I asked about it and do we know when they're going to be reinstalled? Why is it taking four years? I mean, to me, that just seems completely ludicrous, especially in these communities where there are children, you know, there are families. I understand Tori and we don't have recreation staff, so I realize that that probably can't be answered. But I wanted to put that on record because that is important. You know, these are not second-class citizens and they deserve that investment and the ability to be able to utilize their open space. I also really like what Councilmember Biella said regarding staff returning with different scenarios. And so when we look at the 13.5 million in reserves, we were basically given three options, like no, no money invested, paying down the loan, six and a half million or 13 million. And so for me, like one to 13 million is a huge range. So I too would appreciate different scenarios and also the impact of those dollars. What projects would they go to? You know, like I don't necessarily want to allocate six and a half million if we still need to raise 13 and a half million for a fire station or a police station. I mean, I just feel like that money, you know, can we instantly use it or upgrade something? So I would sort of like to see what staff suggests as far as where we would put that money. And then in the scenarios too, if staff can come back and remove and replace the debt service, and this is on slides three and five, and just sort of drop in what the new refinanced loan payment would look like. Because I think that would help us sort of really see, be able to see what it's going to look like, you know, three years, five years, 10 years, also while insurance and labor and repairs is increasing as well. So that would really be helpful for me. Does that make sense, Tori?
Yes, that does. We did create a scenario in the back, but we only used one option. So we can recreate it with three options.
Great. Or even five. I mean, as, you know, I don't want to, okay, I mean, just as many as, as you think would be helpful. Because I think for me, it's hard to go zero, six and a half million, 13 million. I mean, there's so much in between.
Okay.
So I would really appreciate to see sort of what that in-between looks like and the impact of those dollars.
And if I, just for clarification, and then you are wanting to also define if that 6.5 million went out, what would it actually fund?
Exactly. Or 3 million or 13 million, just sort of what, and just ideas, you know, just suggestions. So I can go, oh, okay, wow, that would really make an impact towards a permanent shelter for the ladder truck. I don't know. But that would be very helpful for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Let's go to Mayor Bertam Visher.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And also thank you to everybody who spoke, who's taking the time to still be online or in the room with us. Couple of remarks or reactions for Councilmember Biella. We do have one definite answer for people with income because public information is it for our own city manager. Everybody can look up what the salary is. So we know that that is somebody who is renting a four-bedroom unit that could afford probably different, a different home to rent or own. So that's just one example, might be the one odd one out or there might be more. So, but we don't know. We don't have the data. But I'm not okay with that. I would rather see that unit go to somebody who needs low income or average income, whatever you want to call it, but below market. I have walked Preston and Abrams Park in 2018, thanks to our mayor who made me go three times door to door. And I still am so grateful for that because I saw the play structures and I know why people are upset that they were taken out and they were not replaced. And I was not on the council then, but I was like, what's happening here? You know, and that's the lack of the long-term maintenance program that we're finally getting. And that what we need to see, how much do we need to spend on maintenance? And yes, the last I heard, and I do need to ask the city manager again for an update. The last I heard was that the playgrounds were being designed, but that was quite a while ago. Yeah. So we definitely need to follow up on that. I would love to come out again at Preston and Abrams. I don't know who it was, who, I'm sorry, was it John or Carl? My contact information is on the website because it has been too long since I went door to door and I don't know if that will ever do that again. But my contact is, information is on the website, just like all our contact information is there. And I'm sure that any one of us would be, would be happy to be invited and to speak, to hear more. And I'm not saying this because my term is ending next year and I might run for reelection or not. Like I've said, I will be running. I'll be running for reelection or I might be running away from all of you. But I will run, but I'm not saying that because my term is up. And I know several people have said voters, tenants do vote. I know. But I will listen to everything and I will decide my, base my vote, if we ever got to a vote, based on what's best for our city as I see it, because we hear from different people. And, okay, so many notes. And yes, I belong to a privileged class. I think it was Greg Fury saying that. And Prop 13, tenants are asking for the same security. Well, the property tax is part of the rent that people already pay in most instances. Maybe not for Preston or Abrams, but, but most landlords, they, they will put it in the rent. So tenants already are paying for property tax and they, in that, hopefully in that way, they also have the same, well, privilege, they also take advantage of that cap. And I've often said the difference between a tenant and a homeowner in this country is the down payments. Tenants are paying everything in their rent already. And I wish we could help people who want to buy, but we cannot afford to pay your down payment, but I wish we could. And maybe we can look into a program for that as well. I don't know. And if that's the wish of tenants to own their property. Having said that, as a landlord, as a homeowner, of course, homeowners also have expenses that are not capped. H2H fees can go up. Usually it's capped, but there might be special assessments if they don't plan well. Homeowners can get a bill for that. Of course, there's maintenance utilities. We all know how that goes up. Nothing comes down. And then the big one here in this area as well is insurance. We are not even sure whether we can get our insurance again. So, and I really appreciate hearing that it seemed that I cared and that my voice, my tone indicated that. We all care. Each one of us here, we care and that's why we are here. And it's, I know so many people are struggling. And when I hear that somebody says, you know, I, this lower rent enables me to pay off my study loan, don't get me started about study loans. And it's, I probably cannot say what I want to say here. But I wish people would not get into debt for their studies and start their young careers families with a huge loan. So I know people are struggling. We all are aware. And so that's why we're here and trying to see what we can do to help the people who need it. I'll continue to say that. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Beth. Let's go to Councilmember McCarthy.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll get into the loan a little bit. You know, I'm really grateful that prior councils did purchase this property. I think that it was probably at a time, quite frankly, when they were less likely able to afford it. And they made that choice because they saw the value and we are reaping the rewards big time. And so I'm, I'm just very grateful for that and I am committed to trying to preserve some of those rewards for future councils as well. But I also believe in fiscal prudence. I was very lucky to be taught those skills at a very young age. And so when I look at how we are going to repay this loan or how we are going to refinance, I mean, I'm going to take some of those lessons that I use in my personal life and rightfully, I think, apply them to, to the city as well. And so what that means to me is certainly paying down some of the principal. I think we've set aside 13 million for the loan. I, I think off the cuff, I'm certainly wanting to discuss this, but my, my first reaction would be to apply that 13 million towards the loan so that we get ourselves in a, in a better fiscal situation. I don't think we're deciding that or even really giving general direction tonight. So, but I just want to kind of put that out there. I do want to respond to Councilmember Biola's question. You asked a very good question earlier. You said, I wish I knew what the council in and the nineties and the two thousands was thinking. And I think the answer is the reality is they didn't know, right? Just like we don't know in the next 10 to 20 years, what inflation is going to do, the rate this country is going, it could be really bad. Hopefully not, right? But we could have 20% inflation. Can you imagine the disparity of rents, you know, if that were to be the scenario? We had in, I think 2022, I think we had something like eight percent, something this country hadn't seen since the eighties, right? So the reality is, is I don't think people knew for sure what was going to happen, just like we don't know today. And so having said that, I would hope that as we look at rental policies, if we decide to keep some kind of benefit for existing tenants, that we do that in a, a relative way versus an absolute way, right? So maybe we say, okay, if you're a long-term tenant, you're going to continue to get a 10% below market rate versus this 3% cap, which is more absolute, right? Because that takes some of the unknown about what the inflation data will do in the future out of the picture. And I think that would be wise for the city. Because otherwise that the 3%, I mean, I, I think what the council tried to do is say, hey, an average, you know, over 50 years has been 3% or whatever, but it nonetheless, it's a little bit arbitrary because we don't know what future inflation is going to be. So we put ourselves in a situation by using that absolute number to, to get ourselves in trouble should things be outliers in the future. And then, I mean, finally, I think I'm just going to say something Councilmember Biola said, the, the reality is operation costs, all these costs are, are going up at higher than 3%, just like rents are. And so we've, we've got to pay our operation costs, right? We've got to ma- maintain the property so that it's not only habitable, but a desirable place to live. And so that when we look at kind of market rate rents, I think we need to kind of consider that as well. Aligning the rents close to the market will put us in a stronger position to reinvest in housing. I, I truly believe that the additional revenue would be directed towards improvements, fixing infrastructure, enhancing safety. We heard some of the public comment that, you know, they felt like the safety paradigm wasn't as good as they wanted it to be there. So, and I think that we're going to need to continue to invest in those things and, and that's going to be making sure that we are applying fair market rent calculations and, and the rents there. So I'm going to leave it at that. I don't know that I have a lot more to add to the discussion. I, you know, can, want to continue to hear what, what my colleagues say. I, I do think, and I just want to clarify something the mayor said. Yes, I agree. We're not trying to change you know, the rent paradigm overnight, and we're certainly not trying to create a situation where people have to leave their homes. But what I'm saying is that I do see a situation that needs some fixing for, for sure. I am not in favor of leaving the status quo go. And so I just want to be crystal clear about, about that piece. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Mayor.
Crystal. They could have Jack Nicholson and Tom, Tom Cruise. All right. Councilmember Biola.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So one thing I would like for us to consider, because we're in the throes right now of trying to scrounge up some $50 million for a new police station and a fire station and that kind of, and then the portables moving our civic centers and so one of the things I would like for us, if we can do that, is to not consider using the monies that we get from Preston and Abrams to not have that be used if it's possible. I, I don't know, maybe we're counting on that, but i- if it's possible to bypass that and use other funding for it and, and leave, you know, those fun, funds that come out of Preston and, and Abrams to some of the other ideas that we've suggested. It might be pie in the sky. We might need that kind of thing. I don't know. If it's even feasible at all to not touch that money, but save it for other things.
Just for clarification, that could be, that might determine the bond, the bond size would, I, I believe one of the thoughts in the city manager was that it could be used to reduce the amount. If we were able to apply some of that towards the facility cost. So if the bond was, I can't recall the amount, but it would be able to reduce it by that piece. So yes, it would be that the city facilities would need to go out for the full, full amount that we had reviewed.
Yeah. So I understand that too, because UUT, for example, also would be looked at in a very different way if, if there is some other consequences by pulling that other money. So you see how complicated it is. It's not easy decisions. And the other thing I just wanted to say about the playgrounds at Preston Park and I, I, yeah, I mean, we've already talked about it, but I want to give you a perspective about this. More than two years ago, I remember sitting at a budget meeting for the council and we had been talking about all the, the glitzy playgrounds and the millions of dollars that were going to the Sea Haven, this, the Dune City Park, the, you know, Gloria Jean Tate Park, and we were all excited about it. And then suddenly, for the first time, I'm looking at a slide on the budget and there was an item about Preston Park baseball fields. And I was so ashamed. I thought, my gosh, we have been for, you know, from all the previous maybe two years beforehand. I, I forgot about that. I, I was sort of swayed by all the glitzy things. And I hadn't until I saw that for the first time in our budget review. And I said, my gosh, we have all forgotten about that, that had not been coming up until we actually saw it on a slide. And then I, and I remember saying, I feel ashamed that we are, were aware, we were aware about the playgrounds. I, I visited with Councilmember Visha and we were appalled by, by the rust, the, you know, it was, it was totally unusable and had never been taken down even and was unsafe and the whole thing. So some of us here up here, most of us are not perfect. So please understand that we make mistakes. We who, who have the best intentions and on our heart in some of these things, forget. And, and, and we get, we get as distracted by many other priorities or the glitzy things or the exciting things and we forget. And I know Councilmember Visha's always harped on our maintenance, that we have forgotten to focus on maintenance of everything that we have. All the old stuff, all the new stuff. And so again, this is these things that this council is struggling with is things that you might've said, well, you should have thought about all this before. Well, many councils before us had not also thought of it. So we do the best that we can to, you know, to really get a hold of those, those issues. So I'm just saying that, that that's the lesson I learned from the Preston Park playgrounds. And, and I think we all feel badly that it was, you know, it came to that point. So thank you. That's was all my points. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Earlier, I said there were two purposes that it was important for us. That's an understatement. It was critical for us to keep Preston Park in city ownership. And I mentioned the first one was to keep the unofficially affordable homes unofficially affordable by keeping the rents low, not officially affordable as low as those units that are deeded to be officially affordable by state standards, but to keep it in common practice, common sense ways affordable. That was the first purpose. The second purpose was our financial portfolio as a city. The state has its hands in a lot of our taxes and decisions. The state does not have its hands in our decisions on Preston Park. And so the portfolio of the city needs to be as varied as possible, to be as strong as possible. The idea of losing Preston Parks at then it was 1.75 million, now it's $2 million a year into the general fund was not a popular idea. We really liked the idea of having some revenue from different sources that the state didn't have control over. And so Preston Park has, everyone has commented in public and here on the dais, how important Preston Park is for us financially. So one is doing the right thing. It's giving economic security to as many families as we have units possible. And two, it's, it's providing us revenue, very much needed revenue. Salinas has become a leader recently in Monterey County, maybe in the state, you know, they have like a was it a 0.7 rent control or a 1.7 rent control or something like that, very, very low. And because of that, that's the primary reason why they were embroiled in political divisiveness and millions of dollars were poured into the campaigns to unseat those people that supported rent control. And now they've, you know, they've reversed it and then there's a referendum. But, but Salinas currently is, is the leader in rent control. And it's not just rent control or rent stabilization. But there were four, there was, I think, four other components to that, that ordinance that passed with rent control and rental registry and a few other things. And I think that our city has always had those other things in mind, but they never raised to the priority level when we rank our priorities of 140 projects we have on our plate. Rental registry and all that kind of stays to the bottom. So we could focus on rental care, rental assistance, but we haven't, except that we've maintained very good rent policy at Preston Park. People would like us to have vacancy control. They don't like, some people don't like when you turn over that, that, that unit that's empty now goes to market rate for the incoming resident. But imagine where we would be financially if we didn't have that. So I think for the last 30 years, we've maintained a balance of trying to have fiscal prudence and kindness to people who, who deserve a break, appreciate getting a break. The playgrounds are gone because they were unsafe and not maintained. But not every cul-de-sac in the rest of Marina has a playground either. We have regional playgrounds. The staff told me when those playgrounds came out, the intention was not to replace those playgrounds. The intention was to look at the city and try to have a a quality playground within a quarter mile of all homes. That's not, you know, Brown Court, Walcourt, et cetera. So all those playgrounds the army put in, I was told by staff are not being recommended for replacements because same reason we don't want to try to afford a playground in every cul-de-sac in Marina. We have regional recreational planning going on and we're trying to satisfy the city the best we can afford with wonderful parks. So it would be good to get an update on the Preston Park Playground Plan, because I don't know the answer. The last time I was talking to staff about it, it was Preston Park played, the, the sports fields, that was where people from all these cul-de-sacs in Preston Park, that's where they would come to recreate, not that we were going to replace those other playgrounds that were taken down because of they were, they were unsafe. The complaints are way down. We used to get so many complaints about Preston Park that every year we would try to pass the Preston Park budget and the Abrams Park budget. We would have many people saying, don't you dare give them more money. Don't extend their lease. Whether it was Mid Penn or now Gray Star. So I think that the tides have changed and there's a lot more satisfaction at Preston and Abrams. And I think it's because a lot more money has been put into into garage doors, painting, roofs, balconies, you know, there's been better maintenance over time. So there's less complaints over time. And I think the staff has done a better job over time. I just have to think that because there's less complaints about staff. We don't have any more controversy when we pass those budgets for Abrams and Preston. Every single year, we get almost zero complaints. So something good has happened in progress as far as management. So I have more on my list here, but I think that's enough for this one. And we'll go to Mayor Burtan Visha.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to react to what Councilmember Biola said about the playgrounds. We really talk about the playgrounds. I just want to say we did not forget about Preston. As a council, we decided, and I don't know if Councilmember McAdams was on the council then, that the Dunes, the city park at the Dunes, that's divided into two phases. We said as a council, Preston, the second phase of the city park at the Dunes should not be constructed before Preston Park ballfields have been repaired and hopefully also expanded. So it's different funding now for the new developments. But for this city park, please mark my words. I would like to repeat it here because we might have forgotten. Preston Park needs to be, the ballfields at Preston Park needs to be repaired and hopefully expanded before Phase Two at the city park at the Dunes will be constructed. And, and I know, yeah, there is a design for an, one big playground at Preston Park. But I'd also heard, and I might be wrong, that staff were also looking into doing something small in between those courts because it was so cool. It's totally safe. There are no cars there. It's, it's, it's just great. And then just to like, you know, how we listen to or how we, how people contact us. Some people say, just sell Preston and Abrams, sell the homes or sell part of it. And there you have your millions to build a new civic center. So this is what we hear from other sides. So and as you can hear tonight, I don't think anybody of us is thinking about selling any of those homes. Because we know we would lose the control over any of the rents. So the level of the rents. So that's not, as I look here, I don't think that's anybody's plan here. But, but people are saying that because we do need, if you know anybody who happens to have $55 million somewhere, we could be interested, yes, send them our way. So, but thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Lizbeth. Let's go to Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. Just quick comments, and I'm going to talk about the playgrounds too. I was told by staff and I continue to ask our city manager about the playgrounds and I'm under the assumption that they're being replaced. So unless something has changed, I have been under that or I have been receiving information that they are being replaced. So I would too appreciate clarity on that when staff returns. And then also the funds needed to complete the project. I mean, we're, we're sitting on 13.5 million dollars in reserves. So if we need, need to invest some of that for the playgrounds or a couple of the playgrounds, absolutely. At the minimum though, I mean, if the plan is to have the children of Preston Park, I guess, get a ride and go to another park further away in the city, which doesn't seem realistic to me, but whatever. Then what can we do to improve them so they don't look like abandoned playgrounds? Woodchips, a couple benches, I don't know, something like I, it is open space. I am sure people are, are utilizing it and I, and I think that they should look nice. And not like we just came and ripped out your playgrounds five years ago and didn't bring them back, which is what the reality is. So, and just curious, is that something that Gray Star would handle? Or is that something that the city would take under Public Works and Recreation?
If it is unique to Gray Star, they might go out to bid for, for those playgrounds if it is unique specifically to the housing area, not a city park playground. There, I would need to seek clarity from the city manager, but within one of the multi-year budgets, there is a plan for some playground costs. But I just need to confirm that it's the same one that you're talking about, or if it's something different.
Perfect. And, and for me, again, the headline is we have a recreation director position that's open and not filled and funded. And also to communicate this recreation update or park replacement to the residents. So Gray Star can help us with that. I, I think that that's important to just be a little more communicative instead of the residents sort of feeling abandoned and in the dark. And then also I just want to put on record, I would never support selling these communities. Period. Not, that's absolutely off the table for me. I would definitely, and I think that my colleagues too, we would do whatever we could to keep them and, and to make sure that they're under city ownership. So yes, we do hear a lot of that. Well, just sell them. Oh, no. No way. Not for me. So thank you for, for bringing that up, Mayor Burtan Visha.
Thank you, Jenny. Councilmember Biola.
Thank you. And just along that, when it first came up, we were actually shocked up here. And I think we had a resounding saying, no, we are never going to be selling Preston and Abrams. So just to put that, you know, to bed. And I just wanted to ask Tori, how much is, is the cost for the new baseball fields? I just want people to, to know that we, that that has been approved and that we are proceeding. I just want people to to know that we, that that has been approved and that we are proceeding.
I actually, I don't have that number handy. I will need to get back with you on it. I believe there was $2 million allocated in the budget, but I don't think that we have the final dollar amounts yet.
I think it's in the 4 to 5 million dollar range.
I I felt like it was several. So I just want people to know at where we're talking about this, that, you know, that we are serious about giving some amenities also to the Preston and Abrams. Thank you.
All right. So moving toward direction, writing direction to staff. Brian, I thought you did a good job when you first started tonight, giving sort of your principles. And mine that I want to think about when we give direction to staff is that we need the capital to maintain Preston and Abrams in good condition. So I'll just say that. I think we need options to help Preston, to let Preston Park help finance our newer facilities. Councilmember Biala said, please don't. And I am in favor of the middle approach in this, you know, on this item. If you look on the Preston Park loan preliminary information, you see that there's an option for 6.5 million to loan, there's an option for 13 million to loan and then and maybe nothing. But anyway, so I think that we always have to progress in many directions at the same time. And so we have to progress toward fire station, police station, community center. We have to progress toward paying off the Preston Park Lane loan and other other important projects in our city. So I think that compromising or at least considering the six and a half million dollar loan to city facilities for fire station, police station, community center, that that package should not be off the table. That that's what I'm thinking.
I agree.
And how do we progress toward understanding, we need to make progress to understand the the money that we're not recovering or not receiving from the 144 long-term residents. So at Preston Abrams, there was 49, at, I'm sorry, Abrams, there was 49. At Preston, there was 95, total is 144. So it's 144 very low rental units due to this grandfather effect. And I think that we need data, we need a better idea of, the best idea we can get anyway. Maybe staff can only go so far. But we need the best data we can get on what the city is not collecting from those 144. If you compare them to something, compare them to the average rents being collected in Abrams and Preston, compare them to the market rate. I'm not really sure what number we want, but we need to know some dollar figures that we're not collecting because of this legacy effect. And that's where it comes down to not saying we're going to abolish rent control or rent stabilization. If we went to CPI or 3%, whichever is higher, that wouldn't be abolishing rent control. But what we have now is we were so generous that we said 3% or CPI, whichever is less. Okay, well, it doesn't mean it has to be exactly that way forever, right? It's not, it's not like throw out the baby or the bath water because we're going to modify that to be either one or the other, whichever is more. Or it could be CPI plus plus 3% for those that need to ramp up to get that money that we think is is being left on the table, so to speak. Whether you call it a subsidy or a discount or just the reality because they've lived there a long time. I mean, you don't, you don't need to put a term on it, but we do need to understand what it is. Because if there are accountants or or well-endowed retirees collecting, paying $1,200 rent on a $3,000 unit, that shouldn't be okay for any of us. Just because they lived there in 1996 or 2004. And I don't know if the city council wants to go toward rental registry and these other rental helpful programs, because when we did our prioritization 140 projects, we weren't yelling and screaming to bump those up in our priority, but we can always change that. So my direction, and I'll be very quick on this, is we have to have a plan to maintain the properties. When we see these surges of 18 million and other large numbers, we better be ready for that. We don't want to be caught by surprise, then we're not doing our job. So we're, I'm glad, thankful to staff for letting us know tonight that we've got some spikes coming up in expenses. So we, so my first thing is, can we please get a draft? Couple of capital needs scenarios to meet our capital needs. Second, you've already given us options to help finance the new facilities. Either zero or 6.5 million or 13 million. I think we need to cut bait and make that decision, maybe not tonight, but maybe just bring back to us what you've already done. And I, I don't think we need more help from staff, but maybe other council members do on what the options are to have Preston Park and Abrams help finance new facilities. We may say zero in the end, but I don't think we're done tonight. And then options to pay off the Preston Park loans. Maybe you don't need to do any more work unless council wants it. We've got some options on the table here in this packet. Thank you to staff for doing that, along with the financial new facilities. But that's something else we've got to do, right? We got to make, we got to give staff direction on that. And then bring back the best information you can about how much revenue we're not collecting from those 144 units. And so my last thing, not part of the direction, but just to respond to Kathy, how can we get the information about whether that accountant needs the money or not? A, are you in a PG&E or other utility assistance program? If so, we could establish a policy that your rent stays forever. You know, if you're on, if anyone is on those programs and you're a legacy renter, you deserve it, you know? And if you're not, then we can ask you for voluntarily submitting information. Whatever staff decides voluntarily would help us understand that a person needs to be where they're at. They're not this, you know, expensive, you know, they're not, they're not making a lot of money. But if they don't want to provide that voluntarily, I don't think we can require it. But if they don't provide it voluntarily, it might be legal to to assign them a different rent schedule than than those that are just 3% or CPI. And I think that as a council, this is not direction to staff, but maybe as a council, we need to look at that 3% or CPI, whichever is less. And 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 see what tweaks we can make to that. And staff's already given us a few, you know, 3% plus CPI or CPI plus 1%. We have some of those. So those are the kinds of things I hope that we give direction to staff. And the last thing, thank you to Gray Star staff. I'm not a big Walmart fan, but when I go to Walmart, I like the staff. You know, the the staff at Gray Star are not under Department of Justice investigation for bad things. The staff at Mid Penn before Gray Star, you know, they were good people. They weren't perfect, like we're not perfect, but they're good people. We appreciate what they do every day for the residents and for us, the city, city administration needs. Okay, sorry to go so long there. Councilmember or Mayor Proton Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with all your five points, by the way, but I also wanted to say that, like, I think you said, the number of complaints coming from tenants have really gone down. And I I hope it's not because people are afraid to speak up, like somebody has told us tonight. But when I see the the maintenance at Preston and Abrams, it looks good. So I think you're doing the right thing here. And so and I hope we do hear from tenants or hopefully you will contact your own management company first and only the city if there's an issue that you cannot resolve. But I hope you feel comfortable to contact your, the Gray Star management. But what I see just from a distance, it looks good. So thank you.
All right. Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you. Generally like the direction that you articulated, Mr. Mayor. Couple just comments. One, I think the data regarding missing revenues is here. You know, you might take a little bit of math, but we know what it is and it's bad. And so I think there was just the one area of ambiguity that I'm concerned about is, you know, what's the direction this council wants to go? And in terms of raising the rent, let's, let's talk about this tonight. This is why we're here. I mean, we can kick it down the road if we want and I can count to three. So I'm not going to fall on my sword for what I believe, right? I I want to hear a little bit more from from my colleagues. For me, I think that there needs to be a significant move towards market rates. I think that it's a problem that only gets worse with time. I've said that before. Literally every day that we kick the can down the road, it's a problem that gets harder to solve tomorrow. So I would like to add to the general direction, some sense for staff to have a better understanding of, hey, what does the council want in terms of aligning these these rents? If we're going to leave it alone, you know, let's, let's give them that direction. I think I think it's a decision we can kind of give direction to tonight. So again, I I think that, you know, staff has articulated that the law allows, you know, whatever it is, seven or 8%. I don't think we should go with that, but I think that a 3% plus CPI for, you know, people that aren't on care, that maybe don't have a demonstrated need might be more reasonable. But again, I I I'd like to have a little more of that discussion tonight.
Thank you, Brian. Councilmember Biala?
Yes, and I completely agree with you, by the way. So I I would be in favor of the 3% as well. And here's the thing that
I'm sorry, Kathy, you'd be in favor of?
Of of what Councilmember McCarthy just said, the 3% increase.
I I'm confused. I I didn't know that you said that.
He did.
Yes. Can you repeat what you said so I know she's agreeing with you?
Yeah, I was just articulating that, you know, there's this range of rent increases to get these rents a little bit closer to market. And staff articulated 1, 2, and 3% in addition to CPI and
Possibly 4.
Possibly 4 or 5, and that it could go as high as, I think you said, 7.
7.7 something. You're, you're saying you would support 3% plus CPI?
Correct, for those that are not demonstrated need.
And you would say you agree?
I agree.
Okay.
And and yeah, no, that's okay. And then I also wanted to to add to your list, Mr. Mayor, that the issues of getting legal determination for two things. One, you know, the one that originally I brought up about questioning whether on market rate rentals, if we are allowed to get any information about financial means for those renters. And and then what Mr. Mayor just was suggesting is that could we use a configuration of 3% plus CPI or 1% plus CPI on on certain classes of of the rental, you know, section? So it's not applying it for everything, but it it may be that we look at only these lower ones, for example, and not and not play with the the addition of the CPI in addition to whatever percentage. Are we legally able to do that?
So differential rate adjustment?
Yes, uh huh. So I'd like to get to add that to your list, that we get legal determinations about that, those two things. And also, when I I look at increasing the rates, I would also then also like to say that we have discussed several ways in which we could also increase the level of spending or the the attention to Preston and Abrams amenities for the community. And so I want to be able to 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 say that we'll do both. We can increase rents, but we also have a different, you know, an added focus to that community.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we're going to go through the direction one more time at the end. So hang on to what, remember what you were saying here so we can all do this together at the end. Okay, Councilmember McAdams?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe that I sort of provided my direction to Tori earlier in the meeting, but I can summarize it.
Yeah, I think it's good because we want to have consensus going to them.
Okay. Okay, so I do have concerns about sort of putting a dollar amount on the potential revenues left on the table. And I agree that we can pretty much figure that out. There's already this divide of residents. And, you know, as we heard from the the public today, the community, you know, they sort of feel insulted in a way of like, you know, subsidized rent or discounted rent. So I, if we put a dollar amount on that, I just, I'm not necessarily sure who that would benefit, like that information, who that would benefit. And are we just perpetuating this sort of divide of the people who want to sell Preston Park? And the people who are like, oh, you guys are just subsidizing Preston Park with the communities out there? So I do have some concerns about that. I really appreciate the mayor, you know, bringing up like the PG&E care program and having that sort of be a way to receive a waiver. And just like the care program, I would want to see annual renewals as well. Not just one time, I'm in the care program and then for perpetuity, you don't have rent increases. So I would want to see that annual renewal as well as a hardship waiver, sort of like what the mayor said, if you're not in the program. Because life happens, right? You have a baby and now you're paying, you know, $2,500 a month for childcare. So I do want to have some flexibility for people who make too much to qualify for the care program. And I'm sure staff can sort of, you know, hash that out and figure out what that looks like. Because if we use the federal income levels, that's what the care program uses. So I'm not sure how that would work out. And then you know, as I agree with Councilmember McCarthy, it's like, how, how long do we kick the can, right? Like, we do, we have to make hard decisions. And this is part of being on council and, you know, unfortunately, we we have to, we have to make hard decisions and we're not going to make everybody happy. So I mean, I I too agree with Councilmember Biala and Councilmember McCarthy as far as, you know, I think that the 3% is a reasonable, it it's a nice medium. And then for the vacant, the very small inventory of vacant properties, yes, they they need to be at at this new market level. And that's where I'm at with that. So thank you for having the courage and and encouraging us to be brave too, because it's not always easy.
And if I could steal just a second, I just want to make it clear that if you're one of these folks that has the very low end of the rent, I mean, and maybe staff could come back and prove or disprove what I'm about to say. But my guess is you're never going to pay market rate again. You're always going to be under market. We can never catch up, ever. And so, you know, I hope, you know, even at 5%, right? Like, it is always, we are so far behind, we will never catch up. So thank you.
Mayor Proton Fisher?
Thank you. Yeah, and thank you for having come up with a number that we can discuss. And I agree, I agree. But I'm going to use this word again, it's so hard, the exemptions, we need to know which exemptions there will be for people. Because we definitely do not want people to lose their house over this. So we need, and in in that case, it might have been that they need to voluntarily disclose their income to our city staff. But it, that's the only way to do it. If you if you need help, you need to show your numbers. And so with those, if we have exemptions, if hardship waivers are built in, I agree. And I also, my my question would have been to Tori, like, how long will it take to, you know, how many years do we need to charge the extra 3% to catch up with market rates? And of course, we also have people who have lived not, they they still don't pay the market rate, but they've only been there a couple, I don't know how many years, you know? We have people who've been there, I don't know, maybe seven years and they're below compared to people who've been there way longer, so.
That could be the case. A lot, a lot of them are more towards the median with probably seven years. And I need to probably go back to the sheet, but I would say, I would say that might might be the case. And just looking at, I would have to go back to the actual rent roll to to look at that along with the dates.
Because do we need to have a sliding scale or so? Or do we say it's 3% plus CPI for anybody who's below until they catch up with market rates? So that's something that staff can come up with, with proposal?
Yes, we we can look at that, like, like someone had mentioned earlier. I I just did a rough calculation going out 10 years and not everybody has caught up to the market at 10 years. It might be more closer to the median range or however council chooses to define that.
And what is usually the date that rent increases go in? Is that January 1st or July 1st or is there a on a monthly basis? Because I would say we need to give enough notice to people so they can prepare. We cannot just jump, jump it on them, you know, next month your rent. We will need to give them a long time, I think, to prepare them for the jump, small, small jump. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember McAdams, the reason I thought it was important, and I might be wrong, to know as best as possible, the data of the number, the amount of money is because I would say 144 legacy units times a thousand dollar less rent per month is 144,000 dollars a month. Times 12 months is 1.7 million. But we all might have a different way. And so are we trying to save 1.7 million? Are we trying to save 4 million? Cause Brian, I think had a much higher idea, higher number in mind. So I think it's for transparency and just good management, data is helpful. We know what we're talking about. Cause if it's $60,000 or $600,000, why are we angering everybody? But if it's a big number, the whole city would understand that that's not, that should not be given, you know, lightly. So what I have, uh, and then, and then we can call it a night, or we can modify what I have from what I've heard is, uh, a capital plan to meet maintenance needs, including spikes, spike years. Bring back two things we already have, options to help finance new facilities, options to pay off Preston Park loan. I don't know that any more staff needs to be helping unless council wants more work on that. Dollars not collected, that, that's what I was talking about earlier. And, and annual verification, uh, program ideas, hardship waiver ideas, and evaluate numerically dollars wise. This three percent plus CPI. Brian, was that for all residents or like, or legacy residents or? And Kathy?
Yeah, I think it would be for those under the, the 2010 paradigm and those that don't have demonstrated need, right?
Okay, clear. Three percent plus CPI for those unverified. I'd like to say more than 12 year residents, but it could be more than 15 years or 10 years. It's arbitrary, but we gotta, we gotta choose. So if you want, you know, you guys can, we can all discuss that tonight or later. Do you take, you want 15 years, 20 years, 12 years, 10 years? What's a legacy resident? What's a long-term resident? Back to Jenny's original kind of concern.
The graphs are 10 years.
Yeah, that's why I would like to get more information from Tori about how many years have people lived there and they're how much behind.
Yeah, but this is so rough. It's, yeah.
But yeah. At least it's consistent.
I'm hoping staff is synthesizing what we're saying and it can come back with something. And, and I also want to say, and I think we all agree with this, is that just to be clear, I'm okay with the rent being on the low end of market or even below market, just not so significantly below market, right?
Okay. And so the, we need to evaluate the differential rent legality. You know, can, can you go up X and then you go up Y? Is that legal? And I'd like to float this, this, this is what people really care about, this three percent plus CPI for legacy residents. But the rest of the residents, they would still be under 2010, which is CPI or three percent, whichever is lower, which got us into what we're into tonight.
Yes.
So it could be that for the legacy residents, whatever number that of years that is, we don't know yet. Uh, that's three percent plus CPI, like Kathy and Brian were saying. But for everyone else, it could be pick one CPI or three percent, whichever is higher. That would be a change, but it'd be minimal change. Or it could be, uh, four percent or, or CPI, whichever is higher. Yes. But, but leaving the majority of residents exactly the same may be the best idea and it may not be the best idea. And that's what I'd like to discuss right now. Do you want council, do you want staff to come back with a couple of iterations? Or just leave them alone and just work on the legacy three percent plus CPI?
No, I mean, I, I would want to see, you know, different examples. And also in the policy is where I want to put a timeline on this for three years or five years. So it's not this perpetuity and a future council will be in the situation that we're in right now. So I would like to see in the policy, you know, and in three years, maybe it is, it is caught. I mean, I don't know, maybe the real estate market tanks and they are caught up. We don't know. We don't have crystal balls, but I do want to see instead of this like long-term in the policy, I'd like to see specific timeline. And then that way the community knows, the residents know, and the council knows when it will come back. And maybe it comes back in three years and everyone goes, it's great. It's working great. And that's the conversation.
Okay. Councilmember Fisher?
Uh, thank you. Can staff provide any examples from cities where they have a good policy in place? It might be impossible, but I, you know, why would we have to reinvent the wheel if, if there's a city that already has a?
You mean a rent control, a rent stabilization?
Stabilization and yes. And but because also what councilmember McAdam said, it's true, you know, the rental market could go completely down. We have had 2008. It's, it's easy to remember that we went through that two decades ago, not even two decades ago. So yeah, how do we build that in? Like, uh, there should be an option if, if rents go down, do we still do the three percent plus CPI because we decided that tonight?
If I could just add, just because I heard Prop 218, uh, not 218, but what's the real estate proposition? Uh, 13 mentioned so many times. I mean, I think in that example, there's kind of a ceiling. I mean, the reality is rents, even in 2008, didn't ever went down. They kind of stabilized a little bit, right? Like, and we know with our housing crisis that that is very unlikely. Anything's possible. So good, good question, but I think that I would favor more of a ceiling kind of paradigm, like Prop 13, where it's like, you know, you, you still need to get closer to market to the best of your ability, right? Like especially if the disparity is that great, like.
Okay, the switchboard is lighting up. Let's go to Councilmember Biella.
Just a quick.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Uh, one of those lights is more important than all of the rest of us put together. Our city attorney.
Oh, yeah.
It was actually just a clarification. I was trying to understand the, uh, the other, I guess, concept you were, uh, explaining the four percent or CPI, whichever is higher. Uh, or the three percent or CPI, whichever is higher. I think you were saying for those that the policy does not apply to, but it applies to everyone.
Yeah, I meant the, if we said the legacy 144 units had a special number like three percent plus CPI, what do we say about the non-legacy unit? Do we want to leave it the way it was in 2010? And I heard that, no, we don't. So now it's okay. Well, what are the different options that that could change to? And one thing I see is 7.7% is the Monterey County maximum. And I would think that if we were always at 50% of that, that's pretty fair. Say that there's rent control in the county that's less than rent control in the state and we're 50% of the county, which would be 3.7 or something like that. I'm not saying pick it, but I'm just saying there's options that could be very fair. And yet, uh, we not repeat the problem of getting this difference. So, so Jenny was looking at it like reevaluate it. And that's one way to do it. Another way to do it is, is have a, have a more reasonable rent control that doesn't get you the way we've gotten and still reevaluate it every three or five, three to five years. See how it's working. So we're not getting that, that, that discrepancy. But I don't know how to word it, except that I think we're, we're open-minded to different numbers for the legacy, or maybe not, sorry, for the non-legacy. And it seems like the majority wants to go three percent plus CPI on the legacy. So if that's true, you know, I don't know, we're going to vote tonight, but so.
Okay. I think, I think I get enough.
Sorry to mansplain.
Yeah, no, no, no. I think you were saying so five, five point seven percent, if that's kind of where council is leaning.
No, no, no. I was, uh, well, seven percent is the Monterey County max. And so something less than that should be considered fair. Still have rent control, but a number that's fair. What that is, we're not sure tonight.
Okay.
Except for the legacy, I'm hearing consensus. For the non-legacy, I don't hear consensus because it's a new idea to us. I don't know that we're ready to nail it. But if we are, that's why we're still discussing. So we'll go to Councilmember Biella and then.
Just quickly, um, I, so you talked about the exemptions and the PGE and AU thing there, the program. But you didn't say the, the legal aspect. I, I want confirmation that what kind of income information we are legally prohibited from.
Yeah, we asked in the direction for annual verification ideas.
Okay.
And hardship waiver ideas. So they'll come back to us with what's legally options.
Oh, okay. Well, you didn't, to me, that doesn't speak of Renee's involvement in this. But I, I want, I want to be able to not have another discussion without knowing.
No, no, I got that. The hardship waiver as well as, uh, any annual verification ideas, uh, is kind of encompassing what you were trying to get at.
Yes, thank you. That's it. Thank you.
And just for a quick clarification, you're getting to the 144 legacy employees by looking at really the first bar, the 75, the 20, the 22 and 27 to define them. Okay. I'm sorry, employees tenants.
Going to Councilmember McAdams and then Fisher?
Thank you, Mayor. And also I do think that we need to have a definitive, what is a legacy tenant year? Because that will change over time, uh, based on how, you know, as the tenants continue to stay, more tenants will, will become legacy tenants. So if that's 10 years, 15 years, so I do think that that, um, is an important component in the policy. We don't necessarily have to decide that tonight. Um, but.
Should we take a shot at it? Cause we can't really ask staff to take a shot at it because it's the policy. So either we take a shot at it tonight or we take, we put it in a parking lot and we take a shot at it next time we meet.
I mean, I would, maybe the city attorney can look if there's any sort of example or language of a, of a, a legacy, something that could be comparable to a tenant, you know, I mean, anything like that, another program. Maybe it's not housing, but it's something else. I think that would be helpful. I don't necessarily want to just pick a number out of the sky unless we have to.
If we have to, I'd pick 12. We shouldn't have to, but sometimes you do.
Um, and then you know, with staff coming back, again, I think it will just really be helpful to have all of these different scenarios and all this different information. And I'm going to plug supporting all renters in the city of Marina because we're accommodating a very small group of renters with waivers of, of not having rental increases or being, um, you know, what, what was the, what was the word that Mayor Protam used? Excl- ex, yes, exemptions with being in the care program. And we're leaving out, you know, like as some public commenter said, 60% of Marina's residents are renters. And so we're accommodating this very small group and I want to see that expand. I want to see support from the city, um, be equitable. And, and go to other residents beyond Abrams and Preston. So thank you.
What we said in our prioritization of 140 projects is that's not going to happen. So we as a body need to change our minds during a public meeting or it's not going to happen.
Well, we have 13.5 million in reserves and pulling 500,000 as seed money for a renters assistance program is not going to put a big.
Right. But that's not what we're doing tonight. So.
No, I know. But I mean, it's just, we, we have that, um, available. So.
Okay. Thank you, Jenny. Let's go to Mayor Tepotem Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And we also have 1.4 million, I think that was from the Dunes. Remember before I was on the council, uh, it was instead of them building below market rate or offering below market rate homes for sale. They, they, they bought it off with one point. Yes. And I think it was 1.2 million and there was also $200,000 somewhere. I think it's 1.4 or 1.6 total, which has not been used as far as I know in all those years.
And Tori is writing down, look into this mystery.
Look into this mystery because as a member of the public, I remember I was here and I, I, I might've been on Zoom. And I remember, remembered saying, okay, thank you for having, trying to explain to me why this is the better deal for the city. And it seems like a lot of money, but 1.6 or 1.4 now will be worth less, way less in so many years. And here we are, we have not used that money at all. And I hope we have invested it in something good, but it's probably just saying, so that could be used, I think, for, uh, help assistance. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Biella and then McCarthy?
So going back to some ideas of how to define the legacy, I mean, Tori, you just said, are you referring to the 27, 21, 22, 26 and 75? So visually, we can see it here, but how do we, how would we define this as a moving target? Cause it does change. But could you give it some thought? I'm not asking you to do it now, but, but we kind of instinctively know because we, we can see it here on this graph, but I just don't know how to describe that. So if you could give some thought to that. And, um, then I had another point, but now I can't. So what we were just talking about, I think I'm getting brain dead right now. Um, anyway, it'll come back again.
Sometimes it ever comes back. Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, for me, this whole definition of legacy isn't quite as important to me. And I just want to understand, make sure that I'm understanding correctly. If I move into Preston today or yesterday, like I fall under this three percent cap, right? I mean, it's all, whether it was 20 years ago or yesterday, it's all, all the tenants get that benefit currently. And then I just want to reiterate something I said. So if your, if your rent is $2,000 today and we increase it to a five percent annual increase in 20 years, your rent's going to be 5,306. It's reasonable to assume that the market rate at that time is probably, and it sounds high today, but it's probably going to be like 10,000. You're still going to be so far below. And so I don't know if we can see like maybe a few scenarios like that to help the council understand that how our decision-making is, is not going to necessarily, um, I mean, those folks that are, are far behind are always going to be far behind. It would be nice to maybe graphically see that. And I don't know if that's too big of an ask. I mean, it is, that's okay. But, um, when it does come back to us, like, and, and so the public can understand too, right? Like.
You know, when, when Tori is trying to pay off the Preston loan next February and she's trying to manage the budget and now she's going to be buried with Preston Park crunching. Maybe we should hire an outside expert under Tori's direction to do this crunching. Cause we're, you know, it's easier for us to come up with these ideas, but she's got to do it. And, and maybe we should allocate whatever reasonable funding it would take to get Tori some help on these Preston Park rental analysis questions. So that could be part of our direction that Lane and Tori get together and, and decide what kind of help they need. So Tori's workload is reasonable.
And for me, it sounds like the council understands the paradigm, right? I'm just wondering if there's any benefit into helping the public understand. Maybe there really isn't. I don't know. So I don't want to spend money, you know, after money, but.
What you're saying is important because if we don't do what you're saying, we're just going to repeat this. And in 15 years, we're going to go through it again. So it's like, how do you keep rent control alive and well? And do these other, and, and not be so far apart that every 10 or 15 years, we're having this discussion again.
If I can just say one more thought, in, in terms of these, going back to this definition of legacy. I mean, I think overall, big picture, what I'd like to see is that the city say, hey, at Preston Park, our rents are on average are going to be 10% below market, right? Or whatever it is, whatever that number is, let's get to that point and let's make it a little more equitable. We're still going to be furthering the affordable housing mission, uh, uh, for the city. But it's going to be done in a methodical way that doesn't put future councils on a bind and, and have them kind of grapple with this.
You remember, if you've been following the Salinas situation, CHISP provided test comments from the nonprofit world and CHISP, which is a, a prominent affordable housing provider in Monterey County, maybe other counties. They said 5%, if you're not able to raise your rent as a landlord, 5%, we as a nonprofit cannot maintain these properties. So we are against the Salinas rent control of whatever it was, because it was far below 5%. And I thought, that can't be true because we've had three percent. And we're maintaining these facilities well, and we are, we're garnering $2 million toward our general fund. And we have mobile home parks at three percent rent control since approximately 2012. And we're not hearing anyone screaming that they can't maintain those parks. And so what someone more intelligent than I said, who knows more, they said, well, Preston Park and Abrams don't pay property taxes. The city can afford a lower rent control than Salinas private landlords. And mobile home parks are their own baby. They're they're not under the same rules either. But anyway, that 5% of a nonprofit saying, we can't afford rent control more than 5%, even though that's our mission is to help people afford to be with our with our inside of our units. Councilmember Biala?
I remembered what I wanted to say. So I think, as we talk about all the rental exemption the rental assistance program and stuff, I would really like to say that we, I think we need to hold back. We start with getting our basic rental registry that is also going to be very tough and very difficult to establish and have a lot of even that created some problems, just saying that we're not moving to rental control, rent control, but people were very outraged because they thought this is just a way in which the next step is going to be rent control. And so there was a lot of problems in in all of that. But I think that for us, regardless of whether we're going to rental assistance or, you know, full blown rent stabilization program for non Preston Abrams, I think we absolutely just need to get an assessment of all the rentals and know how much people are being charged. If we don't have that basic information, I don't know how we can also then refine the program and establish assistance programs without really having that baseline. So I would suggest that we we focus on that. And that would be a big chunk right there, even to just do that much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So can we hear from staff? Let's go back to Kathy.
Okay, I just want to say, although I do absolutely like the idea of an assistance program, I absolutely do. But I think we need the baseline.
Okay, so staff, how are you sensing our direction?
I'm I'm a little unclear on the at the very end. I have, looking at a capital plan that meets maintenance needs, options to finance and options, what it could buy. I have dollars not collected. I have annual verification depending on exemptions. And I have potential scenarios of 3% plus CPI, looking at the legacy units and helping to define what a legacy unit is, and looking at any examples of policies that have some kind of stabilization program. And looking, and I wasn't sure on the rental registry if that was part of this motion to to look at that. And I'm, am I missing something? I know the city attorney has some direction on validating whether it is okay to have rent differentials as well.
Okay. Councilmember McAdams?
And also, thank you, Mayor, and also getting some support for you, whether it's a consultant or.
Yes, I have that one as well.
You forgot that one. Okay.
Oh, and then, sorry, just some sort of different scenarios as if we, you know, did invested all the six and a half million. Where would that other six and a half million go? I mean, I heard the mayor say, we'll put it in city facilities. Well, we're notorious for like setting aside money and then we never use it. So I want to know exactly where that money is going to go. And that could also be in like 3 million or 10 million. So just having like zero, six and a half, and 13, just some other middle, middle of the road scenarios and the impact of the the money towards projects. Okay?
So a couple of things that I wanted to clarify is we were hoping to get annual verification ideas. We were hoping to get hardship waiver ideas. And we were hoping to have two or three, we didn't say that number, I'm saying, two or three options about how to approach the non legacy majority of residents out there that haven't been there for, you know, 10 plus years. Because they're their rent control might look different next year than the legacy 3% plus CPI of rent control folks. Does that make sense, Tori?
Yes, it does. Yes, yes, that does.
And then we were going to evaluate the differential rent legality. And I thought you already gave us options to help finance the new facilities, such as fire station, and you've already given us options to pay off the Preston Park loan. But if your council wants more than we had tonight, more examples, more, you know, we need to hear that. But I'm not, I thought you've done it. I thought you, we have what we need. We just want to bring it back and not forget it. That when we come back next time, I want that same information so we can talk about it. But if council wants more options, how Preston Park can help finance new facilities, or more options, how to pay off the Preston Park loan, I'd like to hear that so that staff knows. Councilmember, or Mayor Patricia Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The 13 million or half or none. There will be a citizen advisory committee started soon for the Plan B, sorry. So we might want to hear from them. They might, they might want the full 13 million or not. So we don't have to decide that now, do we? We can, we still have time.
Yeah, all we have to decide now is if we want Tori to bring back more than those three options to help pay off new facilities with Preston Park. Councilmember Biala and then McCarthy?
Yeah. So I just want to clarify about the rental issues, the rental registry and stabilization. I don't think that's, we just were talking about it in the course of discussion. I don't think that we should have Tori look into any of those. And so I think you can kind of table that. And that will be a discussion we have at some other point.
It would probably be next January when we relook at those 140 projects.
Yeah.
Unless we think we need to bump it up sooner than that.
Yes.
That's not tonight's direction.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
And then I don't know if we reached consensus on whether or not we want good data on the money that we're not collecting from the legacy. Okay. Did you have that down, Tori?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember McCarthy, and well, let's go to Renee first. Sorry.
I think just some clarification on the 13 million. I think that that item is likely to come back to council sooner rather than later. Right?
Yes, well, just because the timelines with the bond, I believe we're planning to bring it back at the second meeting in October, because to go ahead and go through all the loan closing process and fund it at the beginning of February, we would probably need to decide in October or to the end of October, which way the council is leaning. We'll have the municipal advisor to be able to provide some advice as far as the financing piece side goes. But it would be good to know the size of the loan at that time.
And I think for me, it's just in terms of how much we put to the debt service. I mean, and I think I heard this from Councilmember McAdams. For me, it's the 13 million, or if we're going to set something aside, I mean, it's got to be sports center level plans of, hey, we're going to move on this, and this isn't going to sit somewhere for, I mean, we, you know.
You mean fire station, police station.
Fire station built on such and such street with this different, you know, construction firm or whatever. I mean, yeah, I think we move a little too slow on allocating money and we lose the time value of money. So again, for me, just as I take my fiscal prudence, right, to the city, I'm just not willing to do that anymore. So if we're, for me, and maybe others feel differently, but if we're serious about taking some of that money that we've set aside to pay down the loan for something else, we need to have really solid plans and we need to be moving on it.
Councilmember McAdams and then Biala?
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, I I've kind of heard loud and clear from this council that there's not a desire to go out for a big bond again. So why would we be putting this to a pipe dream of building facilities and sitting on whatever amount of money for however long? That's why I want to see, you know, if we if we take six and a half million of the reserves, this is what it could be applied to, like tangible projects, not a, you know, $50 million. That's like, less, you know, 10% of what we need to raise. So I agree with Councilmember McCarthy. I don't want to just sit on the six and a half million or 3 million or however much that of the reserves that that we're pulling aside. So that's important for me. I mean, I don't necessarily remember a discussion of where these reserves would go to city facilities. I mean, it was in the agenda packet, but I'm not sure if that's what we've all agreed upon.
It was last week we were discussing it.
Right. So but I mean, you've definitively said a few times, like facilities, the new facilities. So I mean, I.
Following up on last week's meeting.
Sure. Well, I just want to have other options, right? And so for me, I don't, I just don't want the city to sit on the money for however long, which we're just so good at doing, or not getting the project going. So that's what I would like to see is the tangible impact of if it doesn't go to the three facilities, what else could that money be applied to?
The loan. Okay, Councilmember Biala and then Mayor Protam?
Yeah, I think that that we are obligated, right, to spend money, especially on a bond, right? I mean, that isn't there an obligation? So I don't think we have to worry about it sitting. If if we get money from from certain sources, I think you have to spend it, right? So.
If we had a bond, the money would be restricted. But this 13 million, just say, for example, I don't have the number handy, but if there were, if we were $4 million short from building city, city hall and city council, 4 million could be diverted to fund city hall and city council, thus potentially lowering the amount of the utility user tax. On the other piece, is that kind of what you're looking for? Or are you looking for, like, if we kept, if we kept 6.5 million, too, in a bucket, it would fund all of these pending cap, not all of these pending capital projects, but select unfunded projects?
Yeah, I want the what happens if whatever ballot measure doesn't pass. I don't want to sit on this money for another four years or two years when maybe there's a bond. So I just would like to know, like, if whatever November, if something is brought to the voters and it doesn't pass, how can we immediately use that money? What what can, yes, like whether it's an unfunded project or partially funded. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Patricia Fisher?
Okay, thank you. And thank you for that explanation, Councilmember McAdams, because I thought you just didn't want it to go to the city facilities. But you're okay with that. Okay, because I'm in favor of that. We know we need a lot of money. And if we can lower that amount, that will help. And also, you know, we cannot use it for the recreation and aquatic center because that's different funding. That's the impact fees. So otherwise, it's, you know, we loaned 11 million, like, oh, we can pay that off right away. But that's different funding. So I'm sure that we will find something to spend the money on.
Thank you. Okay, so we don't vote, we give direction tonight. Are we done giving direction? And does staff have a sense that they understand our direction?
I believe I've repeated everything with the options to finance, that we are going to look at specific properties. That was the one or specific projects. That was the one item potentially off the list. And I believe it sounds like we're still looking at everything else that I read back. Is that appropriate? Okay.
Shep and Renee?
Shep's saying whatever Tori says. Got it. Thank you, everyone. Very good meeting. We are adjourned.